Thank you, everybody. I'd like to call the Thursday, March 21st, 2024, meeting of the City of Pompano Beach Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. And Martha, if you please call the roll.
Good evening. James Bun.
Present.
Charlotte Berry.
Present.
Nicole Kopak.
Present.
Penny Cutt.
Here.
Richard Dali.
Present.
Anne Yaffe.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
The move.
Second.
Of the February 15th, 2024, meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Folks, here we take a few minutes to explain to you why we're here, what we're going to be doing. I see there's a lot of people here that have probably never attended one of our meetings. I can't imagine why, because we are a very entertaining board. No, I'm really just kidding. We're the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're here because a property owner feels that their property doesn't fit the normal standards of the city of Pompano Beach, and they're looking for some sort of a relief, whether it's a temporary permit, a special exception, or a variance. And there are different criteria that they must meet in order to get our approval. It is up to the applicant to convince us that they meet the criteria. There are six of us here, myself, three folks to my left, two to my right. We're residents. We serve. We do not get paid. To my far right is Scott Reale with the Development Services. He's our staff person, tells us everything going on. James Saunders is to my far left. He's the Assistant City Attorney that gives the board advice. And sort of hiding there is Martha Lawson, who runs the show. So what I'm going to do first, when I call the case, I'm going to have you come up to this podium over here. You're going to give me your name, spell your last name, your address, and tell me if you've been sworn in. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. You're going to testify under oath, just like you would in court. Then I'm going to have Mr. Reale make his report, and then you'll have time to present your case, call witnesses, present anything you may haven't already given us, to let you know that all the, everything you submitted to the city is in our backup, and we have it on devices that we've already had access to. So we've already seen that. So, but you can discuss that, you can talk about anything you want. You've got to convince us that you make, that you meet the prerequisites, and those have been given to you, and they're also in the agenda package. At some point, I'll ask if the board has questions, I'll ask if the public wants to comment, first those in the affirmative, then those in the opposition. This is a public hearing, so everybody gets an opportunity to provide evidentiary testimony. I know for some of you whom, I don't know who's testifying or who's coming here with or without counsel, I don't know. So I will tell you that the most important job that I have is to be sure that you get a full and fair hearing within the rules of procedure. So with that, if you have a question during your, during your presentation, you can ask me. I can't make your case for you, but I can at least maybe help you move down the appropriate pathway. Right now, I want to invite anyone who thinks they're going to testify to stand and raise their right hand and be sworn in. I don't do it twice, so if you're going to think about testifying, now's the time. You don't have to testify, okay? Martha, please swear, man.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all may be seated. The first case tonight, item number one, is a request for rehearing for a previously denied application for Augustin Crocco. It is P&amp;Z 23-17-000010. Sir.
Yes, sir.
Could you identify yourself?
Jeffrey Lynn. I'm the agent for the applicant.
Spell your last name.
L-Y-N-N-E. Equally Myrick Udon, Lynn is my law, and Sykman Law Firm, 2385 Northwest Executive Center Drive, Suite 250, Boca Raton, Florida.
Thank you. This is a request for rehearing, so I'm going to, Counsel, do you have anything you want to say personally? Well, Scott, why don't you tell everybody what we're doing on this one, and then we can discuss Mr. Lauber's report.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Scott Reale with Development Services, and this is a request for rehearing, a motion for rehearing. So at the January 18th ZBA meeting, the board voted to deny special exception application The applicant was seeking approval as required by Section 155, 4202i3 of the city zoning code to utilize the property located at 1302 Northeast Fourth Street for a family community residence located less than 660 linear feet from an existing family community residence rather than separated by at least 660 linear feet as required by code. Subsequent to the board's denial of the application, the applicant formally requested a rehearing and has submitted new evidence which they believe meets the threshold criteria for granting a rehearing. The applicant's written request for a rehearing and supplemental evidence is provided for your consideration. Additionally, in furtherance of the city's position, the city engaged in the services of attorney and planner Daniel Lauber, who assisted in drafting the city's current zoning code provisions regarding community residences and recovery communities following a 2018 study of community residences for people with disabilities. Mr. Lauber agreed to supplement his report and to clarify the zoning requirements and processes for evaluating a community residence or recovery community, proposed for a location within the spacing distance to be a permitted use from the closest existing community residence or recovery community. The February 19th, 2024 memo from Mr. Lauber is provided for your information in the backup. The ZBA rules of procedure have three criteria. The petitioner requesting a rehearing must establish these three criteria, and I'd like to just read them into the record. One, that there is new evidence which could not have been discovered before the hearing by exercise of due diligence. Two, that the evidence is material and not merely cumulative. And three, that there is a strong likelihood that the new evidence will affect the results of a new hearing, if a new hearing is granted. Now, the board shall render its decision after hearing arguments based on the foregoing criteria from the applicant. The concurring vote of five members of the board is necessary to grant a rehearing. If a rehearing is granted, it will be heard on the next available zoning appeals, zoning Board of Appeals meeting, which would be April 18th, 2024. And with that, I turn it back to the chair or to the applicant.
Thank you. Counselor.
Sir, I don't know if you want me just to rest on the motion, or if you want me to speak to, ask counsel for...
I'm sorry. Counselor, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I was going to allow Mr. Lynn to make his statement, whatever that might be, and then I would follow up with the response.
I don't, you have a very busy agenda, apparently, tonight.
I'm sorry? Repeat yourself?
You have a very busy agenda, apparently, tonight, for yourself. I'm not sure. I was saying, I don't know if you want me to reread my motion, or if you all have the chance to read it.
No, we've seen the motion. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
The motion? No, I can, it speaks for itself.
I just want to double check that. Did everybody see the motion? Okay.
Mr. Chair, as the, as staff stated in its report, following the last hearing, there was lots of conversation that occurred between our office, the city attorney's office, as well as Mr. Lynn, and also with our Development Services staff. There was concern when we began to look back at the record to ensure that the board properly analyzed the case before it. When we began to look at that, we also reached out to Mr. Lauber, as Scott Reale mentioned, and then re-engaged him to take a second look at our current code and how this board should view recovery communities as well as community residences. In doing that, Mr. Lauber came back and clarified some points, in particular that when the issue comes before this board of these types of communities, that when you learn that the particular community or the particular home or unit is within the 660 feet... I'm sorry. Not a problem. When you're within the 660 feet, it's already assumed that that has occurred because there is an administrative process that has already vetted that. So that's review level number one, as Mr. Lauber outlines. However, when it gets to this board, the board is more concerned with review level number two, where you are looking more to see whether or not this particular proposed use will cause a normalization of the individuals, an integration into the surrounding community, as well as that it will not change the character of that neighborhood. And so that's really the analysis. Tonight, because of the Dan Lauber supplemental report, the city, our office, believes that there's sufficient evidence, and I think Mr. Lynn, we will all have sort of talked about this, and we concur with each other, that we believe that the report is new evidence, and second, that it is material and that it will have a bearing on how this board views the matter. And we believe collectively that the board should rehear it. That, now, that does not mean, and what Mr. Lynn understands well, that does not mean that this board looks at those factors and may come up with the same result. But we clearly leave that up to the board to determine based upon those specific factors that Mr. Lauber has sort of clarified for analyzing these types of matters. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Can I add to that, Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Saunders. I think there was also a misunderstanding, perhaps, by the board. The request isn't for the establishment of a recovery residence. It's already there, under the definition of family in the city, which is people related by blood or marriage or up to three unrelated people. There's already people in recovery that have been living there for a while. When you want to go above the city's limit of three unrelated to four to 10, that's when this whole process triggers. So my client just wanted to add a fourth resident per side in this duplex, I think, and that's what triggered this process. So I'm not sure if you thought last time you were denying the siding of a house outright, or if you were denying just the request to add an additional individual, which then triggered this process. So I think that is also something that just wasn't clarified at the last hearing, based upon the comments that are in the record from Mr. Dali and the others from before about their displeasure of having a recovery residence at this location near a school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does board have any questions? Scott, I'm under the assumption I don't have a public hearing for this one?
For this, that's correct.
We haven't done one of these rehearings. I haven't been doing one for a while. Okay.
I don't believe the public can, can speak on this matter. They can speak next month when, assuming the, the, this is granted, the rehearing is granted.
Does anybody have any questions before we close the public hearing?
Just a clarification for counsel, I suppose. The memo that was provided from Mr. Lauber doesn't provide any new regulations or rules. It just simply clarifies what we are already aware of and reviewed. This is just a clarification memo, correct?
It was a clarification because when looking at the discussion that took place, there was a heavy emphasis on the 660. And in the abundance of caution, our office, along with counsel and the division, I'm sorry, the department, thought it would be wise to make sure that we had gotten clarification, outlined the more specific criteria, and that we move forward accordingly.
Any more questions? The public hearing is now closed. Board discussion, I'll make a comment. You know, normally, or usually, when we hear an application for a rehearing, we hear the applicant kind of trying to scrape, you know, scrape up some reason, you know, to do this. In this case, it's pretty clear that there was a document that the city had, or the city provided, that offered a great deal of clarification, that they were even concerned, and I think in the abundance of caution. This, by the way, this would be new evidence, or really, if you read through it, it clarifies everything that we're, we're looking at, and it, I think that there's a strong chance that it might change our opinion, but I think it meets all the qualifications and for a rehearing. I'm sorry?
I didn't say anything.
To have a rehearing. So that's my thought. Any other thoughts, motions?
What kind of a motion do we need on this? Just, so, it's none of the, none of the categories, but just a regular motion to move to rehear the case? Okay. So I move that we rehear the case by Mr. Lynn.
Seconded.
All right. We have a motion made and seconded.
Okay. We have Richard Dali.
Yes.
Charlotte Berry.
Yes.
James Bun.
Yes.
Penny Cutt.
Yes.
Nicole Kopak.
Yes.
And Dan Yaffe.
Yes. Okay. You got another chance.
Thank you, sir. I have a quick question. I heard that the next hearing's on the 18th. I have a conflict that day. I will be out of town. Can we push this to the May hearing at the earliest?
Staff doesn't object, yeah.
And we also need to discuss other technicalities, but I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
The May meeting, so we'll notice for the May meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next up is item number two, LN574, a variance for Pompano Real Estate Investments, P&amp;Z We have John Piotrowski.
Good evening.
Would you give us your name, spell your last name, your address?
It's a tough one. It's John Piotrowski. It's P-I-O-T-R-O-W-S-K-I, and address is 2410 Northeast 48th Court, in Els Point, Florida, 33064.
Have you been sworn in?
I have, yep.
Thank you.
Does the board have the PowerPoint that we prepared?
There you go.
You guys have it? I love technology.
We are getting there, folks. Does everybody have, does anybody have the display up there?
Yes.
Okay. I do.
Mine isn't either.
Yeah, well, folks, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll resolve this. Talk amongst yourselves. Okay. It's like it didn't happen. Mr. Piotrowski, you gave us your name, you told us that you've been sworn in, and Mr. Reale, you're going to tell us why we're here. All right, then he will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board and members of the audience. The applicant landowner is requesting four variances from the following provisions in the Pompano Beach Code of Ordinances. The first one is in Section 15103G2, in order to construct a 50-foot finger pier from the measurement reference line, which is also known as the MRL, that extends an additional 30 feet into a waterway rather than limit the finger pier to a maximum distance of 20 feet into a waterway as per code. The second variance request, Section 15503G2, in order to construct a five-foot wide finger pier rather than limit the finger pier to a maximum width of four feet as per code. The third requested variance, Section 155, one, excuse me, 15103G1, in order to construct a 25-foot by 5-foot T-doc at the end of a 50-foot finger pier that extends a total of 55 feet from the MRL. This is an additional 47 feet into a waterway rather than limit the dock to a maximum eight-foot extension into a waterway as per code. And the fourth requested variance is Section 15103G4, in order to construct a boat lift that extends a total of 66 feet from the MRL that extends an additional 38 feet into a waterway rather than limit the boat lift to a maximum 28-foot extension into the waterway as per code. The applicant is requesting a number of variances associated with the Pompano Beach Code of Ordinances, which are all from Chapter 151, Beaches and Waterways, in order to build a structure that will extend into the waterway 66 feet encroaching into the navigational canal. The applicant's narrative makes the following statements. A, the proposed project falls entirely within the property lines of the 855 South Federal Highway parcel. B, the shoreline of the subject property has receded over the years. C, the water in this area is extremely shallow, making it impossible to effectively use the property as intended. D, the proposed project will not impede navigational, navigation within the, within the canal. E, the proposed structures were approved by Broward County Environmental Protection and Growth Management Department via license GL-POB2303-035. The associated Pompano Beach Building Permit Application, BP23-3033, was rejected by the city's engineering department prompting this variance application. Now, pursuant to Chapter 15109B1, property owners seeking relief from the standards in Chapter 151, Beaches and Waterways, must first go before the Marine Advisory Board, that's the MAB, for its review and recommendations. That meeting took place in August 15th of last year. The MAB recommendation memo is provided in the backup of this report and provides a detailed review and analysis of the petitioner's request. The board recommended denial of the variance application, articulating the following points as part of their line of reasoning. A, the proposed project extends into the navigational channel. The encroachment would require a variance under Chapter 15103C, which states, "No mooring structures or any other similar structures may be erected or installed into the navigational channel or cause a watercraft or vessel to extend into the navigational channel." B, a variance cannot be granted from Chapter 15103C, as noted in Section 15509B, which states, "The provisions under 15103B and C are prohibited from variances." C, the proposed project would also require a variance from Section 91.10D1, again, because the encroachment into the navigational channel. The powers and duties of the ZBA do not extend to granting relief from this code provision. The applicant did not provide a bathymetric survey, which is required for submission if shallow water is the primary reason for the variance request. And also, not mentioned in the staff report, but, but in the agenda backup, there are a couple of code cases associated with the subject property, one of them being issues along the, the canal of the property, where the applicant is seeking relief. As you know, there are eight variance review standards, and the Marine Advisory Board states the following. Based upon the MAB's review and discussion of the above conditions, the MAB does not recommend the requested variance. As previously noted, the project as submitted would require relief from two additional code provisions related to encroachment into the navigational channel. Both of these code provisions, 15103C and 9110D1, fall outside of the ZBA's power and authority. Before we get into the specifics of this, I just wanted to point out that with me is Mario Sotolongo, who is the Code Enforcement Director, who can answer any questions about the code violations associated with the property. And I also have David McGurff from Engineering, who is very, knows a lot about the specifics about, about Chapter 151, and, and my specialty is Chapter 155 zoning code. This is outside my area of expertise, so we have him here as well to speak, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Scott. Sir, tell us why you're here.
Thank you. God, that was incredibly good, man. That was well done. So we, there's a quick recap I will do, and then some new information that has been presented to us or discovered by us in the process of working through this and then post the Marine Advisory Board meeting. Couple things I want to point out, I'm going to just scroll over to it, is that this is a kind of a very unique situation. This project is entirely inside the property line of what most people refer to as the Accardi dealership property there.
Mr. Chair.
So this, this...
Sorry, sir, to interrupt you. The gentleman did not introduce himself for the record. He did.
I'd be to do it again. It's John Piotrowski. I'm represented from the Dock Experts, where the contractor proposing to build the structure. So the first thing I want to point out is what makes this particularly unique is, is that very rarely do you guys, or will you guys, see a proposed project like this, that you've got a property line extending that far into, you know, what appears to be the waterway there. I think our position differs somewhat from a lot of the information Scott provided with respect to this extending into the, into the waterway or the... with respect to this extending into the—into the waterway or the navigable waterway. I think our position, the navigable waterway, is outside that property line. In point of fact, generally, there would be a seawall built or could build a seawall all the way out to that property line. Then our project would be extending to the—I guess, in this case, west of it, actually in the navigable canal. So I think our position here is that our proposed structure is entirely inside this property and is not impeding in the navigable waterways. One of the things that we didn't have with us when we were—as Scott mentioned— when we were at the Marine Advisory Board, because quite frankly, we weren't convinced that it would be necessary. What you see on the screen there is the bathymetric survey. Hopefully, you guys have it on your computers, because I know it's hard to see up there. But as a—as a—as far as why the proposed structure is—is far out from the receded shoreline—or measurement reference line as it is, is clearly due to depth and erosion over time. And as you can see there, that it's—you know, we've pushed it in as much as we possibly could and still allow it to be used as it's intended. And I think the entire reason we're here today is because—well, the primary reason is because of a distance from the measurement reference line. So we—there's some guests here tonight that'll speak to this, but there was a prior agreement between the Pompano—the city of Pompano Beach and the landowner to secure the property line or the original seawall line. And because of some litigation and other factors, that didn't happen. And there's some obligation from the city to maintain an easement and shoreline. And had that been done, we probably wouldn't be here tonight, because we wouldn't have the shore erosion that we've had. So the primary reason we're here tonight is because of a—in a disagreement or an agreement between the landowner and the city years ago to maintain that shoreline. Unfortunately, it wasn't—
Do you have documentation of that?
We do.
Okay.
We do. So I just wanted to mention that as a reference, is that—you know, kind of, why are we having this discussion? Because this thing sticks out into the waterway. And our—in our rationale for the applying for the variance is, number one, this structure is entirely inside the customer's property line. Number two, clearly shown now that we didn't have with the Marine Advisory Board through the bathymetric survey, is that—that is as close inland to—as we could get it and still use the structure as a—and be able to get a boat lift, where there's enough depth for the lift to go down to put a boat on it, et cetera. And as far as the width of the dock, as a construction builder, when you've got a four-foot wooden pier with wooden piles, the way that it's constructed, the way the plans are that were submitted to—the city, if you go much narrower than that, you won't have enough room for anybody to pass through the dock, you know, as intended, with a cooler or wheelchair or anything else that might need to go through there. So it's a—for our perspective, a safety concern to make it any more narrow, which was—which is one of the concerns that were brought up. So—the three things I think I want to point out that's new, as we just discussed, are those items. And I'd—I'd like either the homeowner or his representative to come up and talk a little bit about some of the prior agreements between the city and—the property owner.
May I have your name, please?
Jennifer Casso.
Spell it.
C-A-S-S-O.
And your address, please?
1070 Southeast 6 Terrace, Pompano Beach, Florida.
Have you been sworn in?
I have, yes. So I am the general counsel for the Auto Group and for the property owner. And the—the—the agreements and the documents that we're—that I've found in these preserved boxes—because there's boxes of them regarding this canal—are pretty extensive, so I haven't been able to go through them at length. I know that the city attorneys have been involved. I know that there was an agreement. I know that at the—at one time, the property owner was attempting to build a seawall, and it never got through the whole process because of some issues with title on the Nancy Canal. And so there was—there was information needed from the city of Pompano Beach on how they were going to dedicate and who was going to be responsible. And there was attorneys involved, and there was a settlement agreement. But then there was never able to be a completion of actually preserving the land, which I can talk more in depth with the city attorney, probably, because I have to make sure of confidentiality, if there is any in these agreements, that I'm not violating it by speaking in front of a whole audience of people. But the longer the short of it is, is that had there been able to be a seawall put in— I think it was 2002, of the last records that I looked at, but they date back even further than that—then the property owner would not have lost as much property. They would have been able to fill in the property as it was getting eroded.
I'm going to stop you for just a second, Counselor. You're not giving me any evidence here. We need evidentiary testimony, and you specifically said that any evidence—you're not going to present evidence—
Well, I have settlement agreements with me.
Okay.
But I don't want to present that, because I haven't reviewed them.
No, I'm saying, if you're not going to present it, let's not talk about it, because you're not presenting evidence. You're—you're—now it's hearsay.
Okay. So I have an agreement that I can show to the city attorney, and—
If you won't show it to me, unless the city attorney wants to tell me there's a difference, then I—I don't know how I can consider that evidence.
Okay, well, the property line on the survey is evidence that it's our property, and there is erosion. And I would—I would like to—if I could speak to Mr. Sanders about all of these documents—I haven't reviewed them. I haven't had time. I've uncovered boxes. I've reviewed them quickly, but I don't want to speak out of context unless I'm—you know, attorney to attorney, so I don't have to worry.
Ms. Cutt.
I have a question relative to the proposed seawall. Was that seawall proposed along the property line?
The proposed seawall—I have the dock—I have the drawings for it. This goes back to, like, '02.
Okay, was it proposed along the property line? Or was it proposed along the mean high water line?
I believe it was—can I bring it to you?
Sure.
It appears to be along the property line, from a straight angle there. And this is kind of where we're eroded to today, so this is where the fill would be in here.
Scott, can we put that on the overhead for everyone to see?
I'm not good with technology.
Yeah, just switch the button over.
So even if it were proposed along the property line, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Environmental Protection, and Broward County would argue that the seawall would go—should go along the mean high water line?
I would say that's hearsay.
I would—what I can say is that the project was held up because of the title issues with the Nancy Canal, which led to a settlement agreement, which I have a copy of, which I could share with Mr. Saunders.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mr. Saunders?
And I apologize, but Casso, I believe I tried to reach out to your offices before tonight, but if you didn't—my message, that's fine.
Then I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I—it—because it—I understand the boards—so you—you've put them in a sort of a situation where you're presenting something that typically lawyers do have a chance to talk through and have a chance to ferret out. And it's—if it's integral to their determination, we—we should spend time, I—I believe.
I—I agree, yeah.
And—and so I'm not sure if—if maybe this is premature to have this matter heard tonight, and if you'd want to postpone it so this board doesn't spend more time sort of trying to fix whatever may have been the past or whatever—because we've looked for these agreements, and staff on our end is not aware of it. So it's maybe more of an opportunity to have a discussion for—to bring this matter back at some point.
Do you think one month would give you enough time?
Again, I leave it up to the applicant to determine whether they want to do that.
One month would be enough time for me. I—I hadn't reached out to you prior to because of the timeline for the meeting. And I wasn't actually expecting to speak, because when I saw the presentation and that it was inside our property line, I just brought it in case I would refer to it. And so when he asked me if I had evidence, I do. I would rather speak with it privately.
Good. So if I'd like a motion to postpone Pompano Beach—I'm sorry—Pompano Real Estate Investments, P&amp;Z 23-11-00016, to the meeting of April 18th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll see you next month. Please get with the city attorney, so we can clarify anything. All right. Now you guys have me wondering why you're—what this whole group of people are doing here. Oh, the one we just heard?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to—because she didn't disclose—I'm going to kind of tell you this. Because she didn't want to give the information to us directly, but rather through our city attorney, we postponed it one month. We're not ruling on it today at all, so you—you know, that—that's it. But it'll be here.
Can I ask you a question?
March 7th—uh, April 18th.
Thank you.
And 6:00 PM.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Will some of this information be provided to the homeowners if the attorneys are discussing if it's relevant?
There are letters they wrote.
No. No, there's some—there's confidential attorney stuff. She was claiming confidentiality and wanted to keep it amongst the attorneys and keeping us out of it.
But wouldn't it be relevant to us if the homeowners—
Everything we do here is out loud, open, and you're welcome to our backup. But Scott, Scott, our backup is not privileged, right?
No, no, anything that's—that's—that's submitted as part of the application—
There's a whole—can they go on—the Internet?
Yeah, absolutely. You just download the agenda, click on the link, and everything, including all 12 letters of objection, were—are—in the backup. The entire application is in the backup, and the staff's report is in the backup.
We try to keep this as—as people-friendly as we can.
Mr. Chair, this won't be re-noticed, will it?
No.
Okay, so just to let the community know, there won't be a notice sent out again about this next meeting, because you're on—
Let your friends know.
Let your friends know, let anybody know. There won't be another letter sent out, is what—I was trying to allude to.
If y'all are going to go, we—we need the room for another hearing. Or you're welcome to stay. All right. Item number three. Bayview of Pompano, P&amp;Z 23-11-00017. Sir, tell us who you are.
James Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R. I'm a unit owner for 26 years in the subject condominium. I'm a native of Pompano Beach since 1959.
I'm sorry, and you're—you're testifying as a representative—
As a condo owner for the subject property.
So you're the representative of the condo?
Uh, I'm—I'm the—uh, yes. And—
Scott.
Dock expert.
Okay. All right. And—and I'm sorry, your last name again, could you spell it?
Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R.
And your address?
2500 Bay Drive, Unit 2B, Pompano Beach, Florida, 33062.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Now we're going to let Mr. Reale tell us his side of the story.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, everyone. This is P&amp;Z Case 23-11-00017. The applicant landowner is requesting variances from the following provisions in the Pompano Beach Code of Ordinances. There are three of them. The first, Section 151-03-G2 in order to construct a 40-foot finger pier, often existing permitted eight-foot wide marginal dock from the measurement reference line, which is the MRL, that extends an additional 48 feet into the waterway rather than limit the finger pier to a maximum distance of 20 feet into the waterway as per code. Second request, Section 151-03-G2 in order to construct a six-foot wide finger pier rather than limit the finger pier to a maximum width of four feet as per code. And the third requested variance, Section 151-03-G1 in order to construct a 30-foot by six-foot marginal T-doc at the end of a 48-foot fingered pier that extends a total of 54 feet from the MRL. This is an additional 46 feet into a waterway rather than limit the dock to a maximum eight-foot extension into a waterway as per code. The subject property is located on the east side of Bay Drive at Norfolk Street along the Hillsborough Inlet. The proposed project consists of reconstructing a previous structure destroyed by Hurricane Irma in 2017. The applicant's narrative states that the proposed scope of work will be in the same footprint as the previous dock that was installed. Specific improvements include replacing existing wood piles and the framing and construction of a 40-foot by six-foot finger pier extension and a 30-foot by six-foot marginal T-doc. Letters of no objection to the proposed project were provided from adjacent property owners. And as I stated in the previous application pursuant to Chapter 151-09-B1, property owners seeking relief from the standards in Chapter 151, Beaches and Waterways, must first go before the Marine Advisory Board for its review and recommendations. And this meeting also took place on April 15th of last year. The MAB recommendation memo is provided herein and provides a detailed review and analysis of the petitioner's request. The MAB memo finds that the proposed project is commensurate with the surrounding properties and recommends approval of the requested variance application. As you know, there are eight variance review standards, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence sufficient to satisfy those eight variance review standards, staff recommends the board include the following two conditions as part of the order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals. And two, substantial compliance with the plans submitted with this application. And again, we have our esteemed colleague here, David McGurk, who can answer any technical questions about this item. That concludes the staff's report.
Thank you, sir. Tell us why we're here.
This is a dock on the south side of Hillsborough Inlet, which has been present for 47 years. It was destroyed in Irma in 2017, and we're asking to replace the same footprint that we've had for those 47 years.
Everything's the same?
Well, they may use different components, but—in layman's terms, yes.
Length, width, dimension—I mean—
Better materials, because—
Okay, but exact same footprint?
Almost exactly.
Tell me the almost.
It's hard to tell, because what's left of it, our name is, you know, scattered piles.
Okay.
But the T-doc, at the end, I think it is, give or take, six or eight inches from where the original footprint appears.
Okay.
It is—it is my belief that we're in the same footprint, to the best we can tell.
Penny, you're our nautical marine expert. Got any questions?
What's the purpose of the proposed structure?
There have been assigned dock spaces within that dock. If you enlarge it, it's a T-doc. There's actually seven dock spaces, and they were assigned in the original building since 1977. And all the unit owners have a specific dock space. There are seven of them within that dock.
Are mooring piles proposed?
I'm sorry?
Are mooring piles proposed as part of this construction effort?
The—the—
Mooring piles to secure the vessels and the slips?
Yes. The majority of which are existing.
We have—most of them are still there. I can show you the picture after Irma, that they're still there. The pilings are still there. You want to see the picture?
Yeah, I'm just not seeing mooring piles on the existing or proposed structures in the drawing?
Yeah, they're—they're in all of the drawings, all of the permits. There's a marine facility operating license from Broward County, which identifies every one of the seven slips, all the proposed mooring piles and the dock. And made an—there was an agreement made with the city that Dave can talk to, that we removed—there were a few of the mooring piles that were a concern for the city. We removed those. So just—the just the ones remaining on the plans, it's been approved by Army Corps, Broward County, Department of Environmental Protection, and necessary for those internal slips are all that's being proposed. But all that stuff—
So I see on Sheet 3, existing mooring piles to be removed, and on Sheet 4, I'm not seeing proposed mooring piles. Additionally, I—I see a marginal dock proposed. Was that there previously?
Yes. The dock that comes off the seawall, yes.
Okay. Why are the existing mooring piles to be removed and no mooring piles proposed?
I—I assume maybe some—I—I don't know—he's our expert. I assume some have deteriorated to where it wouldn't be safe and would have to be replaced.
No, there's none shown on the proposed— No, there's none shown on the proposed plan on Sheet 4 of 6.
I think it's probably an issue of, there were several versions of the sets of plans. So when we went originally, we included the full scope of the project, and we had to go back through the variance process, and so we ended up submitting to the city the marginal dock portion only, and agreed to remove some of the outside dolphin piles. So we modified the plans to resubmit with just the marginal dock piece, which was approved, which we have built, which we have closed out, and then went back. And I think, my honest guess is that there's a set of plans that includes the ones that are inside the slip there, and that for whatever reason is just on the set that's in this PowerPoint deck.
I'm just a little concerned about the purpose of the structure. I mean, I understand, you know, a variance may be needed to accommodate the previously existing slips, but if there's no mooring piles, then the structure doesn't necessarily warrant a variance if it's not to accommodate those slips and it's just a viewing platform.
Can you explain to the board what a mooring pile is?
So a mooring pile is a piling installed so that you can tie up a boat and secure it to the dock. So theoretically, the vessels would be moored perpendicular to the access walkway in the, in the structure. We've got a T-shaped dock with an access walkway and a terminal platform, and there, the existing conditions sheet shows some mooring piles that could be used to secure vessels in each of those slips. But the proposed plan doesn't show any mooring piles, which makes me wonder what the purpose of the structure is, and if it's just as a viewing platform, then I don't know that it necessitates a variance.
And you're saying these mooring pilings are the ones that they would back a boat in, so the boat would be perpendicular, the mooring pilings would be in front of the boat to tie the front of the boat to?
Correct.
Just wanna be sure we're all on, and you're not, so how, now that I know, I know exactly what a mooring pile is now.
Speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry? I'm sorry, it's right here. How are you gonna dock boats?
Perpendicular.
Well, there's seven.
With two structures that she's describing, that's the way it's always been.
It's always been simply?
Perpendicular. There are seven, there are six before the T, and one person, one owner has the other.
And everybody's perpendicular?
Yes, sir.
No, not everybody's perpendicular. Seventh slip is on the end. So, the nomenclature in the middle, although I think the actual...
I'm sorry, forgive me, let me go back. Are the boats parallel to the dock?
So...
They're one at the end of the T.
So the rest, the others going out to the T are perpendicular? And if they don't have a mooring piling, what are the bows tied to?
The mooring piles are existing. I think that's why she doesn't see them in the set of plans. They're there today.
I'm just trying to...
It says on Sheet 3 of 6, existing mooring piles to be removed. Eight existing mooring piles to be removed.
So the, on the original set of, there are, I think there were three or four on one side and three on the other that were right in line with that, with the red property line. And we made an agreement with the city to remove the exterior piles that are there. There are interior mooring piles that are still present today. When we originally quoted this job, there's obviously a cost factor that's involved here, and they wanted to try to use as much of the existing structure as we could. So the mooring piles that Penny is asking about for the boats on the inside there, those piles are existing today, and the hope is that we can still use all of those interior piles. The exterior ones that were removed, there was a concern about proximity to the property line or the easement line of the waterway. So when we got the original set of plans approved for the marginal dock, we agreed with the city we would take those exterior ones out. But the interior ones that help with the slips that Penny's talking about are still there today, and the plan is to leave them there unless, you know, they break or something.
On these drawings, I see existing dock pilings, but I don't see any, any additional mooring pilings on the existing conditions sheet.
Mr. Chair, you still have Dave McGur who's here. I'm not sure if he may be of any assistance to... Is David here? Oh, there I am. David, if you can come up here, please, and maybe shed some light here.
Dave McGur, MC, G-I-R-R, 13 Southeast 19th Avenue, Pompano Beach. I'm the chief engineering inspector.
And David, you gotta tell me, have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
All right, fire away.
So, the first permit that came in for the dock, everything came in all together at once, and then I told them about the variance process, the finger pier and all that. We couldn't find any records on it. So John went through, started the process to move forward for the variance. The dock, we started the permit process, but I sat with the city engineer, and all the dolphin mooring piles that you see along the red line are on the property line. And everything within our code, nothing can be within five feet of that red line. So we had, as part of the agreement, remove those all on the outside. Some of them were beat up pretty bad, and they agreed to that, and that's what they did. Now, anything inside those, closer to this T-dock, I'm not really sure about. There probably are some, a bunch still existing. I haven't been down the inlet in a while, so I couldn't tell you exactly what's still there. But I'm sure it'll show up on the plans when they resubmit.
Have you seen a set of drawings that show mooring piles existing to remain?
I don't recall, to be honest with you. I do not recall. I look at a lot of plans, so it's hard for me to remember.
I understand.
Any other questions, Penny? Anybody else have any questions? Sir?
Is it possible to tie the mooring piles as a stipulation to the variance in any capacity? Like, to make sure that they're there, or, you know, is that a stipulation we can include as part of the variance proposal? Staff, Scott, is that possible?
Typically, any, I believe so, if it doesn't require relief. But anything that would otherwise require relief should really go before the Marine Advisory Board for reconsideration before we add that as a condition.
Another question. If those mooring piles are existing, how far waterward of the proposed access walkway replacement are they?
Sorry, ask the question again, Penny?
The proposed, the existing mooring piles that you're saying are to remain, how far waterward of the existing access walkway are they?
I'd be guessing, but I would tell you they're somewhere 10, 12 feet, probably.
And what size vessels are they proposing to moor there?
Well, they're, you know, they're, yeah, smaller, I would, again, I'm speculating, but it's not designed for large vessels, so...
20-foot?
Yeah, you know, you'd have...
And so typically, a mooring pile would be, you know, at least the length of the boat, preferably beyond the length of the boat. So if the piles are midship, they're not gonna effectively secure those vessels.
Again, I would say that's speculation. I build, we build hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of docks and pier slips, and the mooring piles are anywhere from midship to 20 feet out in front of the bow, and they're secured all of the time. So you do have to do it carefully, but again, I think we're getting a little, a little off track. There's seven slips all approved by the Broward County, including the seventh one, which is out on the end of the T-dock. So it's not an all-or-nothing scenario. We were trying to be cost-effective in the plans for these folks and not replace anything we didn't absolutely have to. So we certainly have no problem of putting, you know, additional mooring piles in, as long as they're not where there's an issue for Dave and the city near that, near that outer barrier. So if we need to add some, we certainly can. I don't think our desire is to go back through MAB or drag this out. I mean, this has been years and thousands and thousands of dollars. These folks had a hurricane take out their dock. They're just trying to get it back exactly the way it was. It's the same slip design, nothing changing. There are seven homeowners there. They all, you know, have the right to have their slips back, whether they use them or not, and so that's, that's all we're trying to do.
Any other questions?
Dave, is this mooring piles part of a permitting process in any capacity? Or do they need to have a permit to, like, part of the permitting process to build the dock?
Yes, yes. If it's an existing piling, we'll make them show those on the plans with accurate dimensions, and anything new would have to be permitted, yes.
Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in support of the petitioner? Hearing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition? Again, hearing none. Just checking, Martha, I didn't see any correspondence. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, very good. Do you have any closing, are there no more additional questions? Okay, any closing comments?
Making sure there's nothing we missed. No, I think the most important thing is we're, our attempt is to rebuild the structure as it was prior to being destroyed. We're attempting to use as much of the existing structure as we can and replace what needs to be replaced. All the permits have been, all the permits have been pulled for every applicable municipality, including the seven slips and a special license for those. So, you know, I think we've, we've been at this for a couple of years and done everything we can to get this done for these folks, and their neighbors on either side have had this done. So, hoping for your approval.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a board discussion, motions?
Board discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not opposed to the proposed structure replacement in kind of its truly to more vessels. My concern is that I'm looking at a drawing that says existing piles to removed, to be removed. There's an assertion that there are existing pilings to remain that are not depicted on the drawing. And if those pilings are existing to remain, they're midship pilings that wouldn't effectively secure a vessel, let alone a vessel in an inlet with, with the fetch and the traffic that we have in an inlet. And so if mooring piles, at least the length of the vessel, are installed to safely secure those vessels and the structure is truly proposed to more vessels, then I don't necessarily object to the project. But if the proposed structure is not going to be putting in mooring piles to safely moor the vessel, and it's simply a viewing platform, then I don't think it justifies a variance to our code.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Further discussion?
I'm just curious, is, how would they effectively be able to show you that, Penny?
Well, I mean, if engineering had a set of drawings that showed pilings the length of the vessel, or if our approval were contingent upon inclusion of mooring piles, you know, at least the length of the slip, typically, I think voters on our board are pretty familiar with mooring piles typically, typically being, you know, a little bit beyond the length of the vessel. Then, then that would give me a level of confidence that this is a dock for seven slips and not a viewing platform, and they could safely moor the vessels. But if this is just a viewing platform, I don't think it necessitates a variance to our code.
I would agree, because a lot of it is based on being able to get out there and get to your boat, the shallowness, everything in that area. Scott, how can we take Penny's concern and turn it into?
Action.
Action.
I mean, I can defer to the city attorney, but I believe that if, if this does not require a variance or additional relief, then it wouldn't need to go back to the Marine Advisory Board, in which case you could just add it as a condition. If subject to the city attorneys.
The, what I could, what I go back to is I could look back at what has been identified as the applicant's request for variance. And when I look at them, again, I, I don't profess to be a waterway docking expert in the least sense. However, the language, I, you know, I think you may want to look back at what variances are being requested. And what I heard Ms. Cutt mention, she distinguished between what is a dock versus what is a viewing platform. I don't know if that term, dock, would be exclusive of a viewing platform or not. But I know that the variances that are being requested relate to dock. And where those references are made to dock, if this board wants to, I think, insert in its approval a dock for seven slips, I think that might be sufficient if you insert that language in your request or in the order. Again, I don't know if the terms are synonymous or not.
No, they're typically not in there. I, I believe they're defined in our code, but I've got another question for Dave.
Yes, Penny?
This just kinda came to me with the mooring pile location and the restrictions in 151-03, oh, 151-03, and the requirement for a variance for a mooring pile that exceeds a specific distance waterward of the measurement property line. So technically, those mooring piles would require a variance.
Depending on the size of the body of water. I don't know that one off the top of my head. I don't have the code in front of me, but I...
But isn't it a percent, a percentage of the width of the body of water or a distance, maximum distance?
Body of water is bigger than 140 feet.
Hang on, I have it here. And I should know it all. If it's bigger than 150 feet, but more than, sorry. 150 feet or greater in width dolphin mooring piles can extend in 40 feet as measured from the measurement reference line, 151-037.
That is correct.
So what is our waterward projection of the structure? It is... So the mooring piles would be within 40 feet? Because the access walkway is 40 feet from the marginal, oh, no, the marginal dock is another nine feet. So two of the mooring piles would theoretically need a variance.
Possibly, yes.
To safely secure seven vessels at that structure.
I'm a paper person. I need to see plan, see mooring piles, no, no, the plans.
I've got them right here.
No, with the mooring piles on there.
Understood. So at the center of the marginal dock, it's referencing eight foot nine and a half inches, and then the access walkway is 40 feet. So, and then the terminal platform is beyond that, but theoretically, all the mooring piles would be within that, that terminal platform. So, it sounds to me like two of the mooring piles would require a variance. The outermost, on either side of the access walkway, to secure those seven vessels, two of the seven vessels.
Is this assuming that the mooring piles aren't there in existence still, correct?
Well, what we were told is that the mooring piles on the property line were removed and that the midship mooring piles are existing to remain. And I just don't see how you can secure a 17, 20-foot vessel with mooring piles, you know, midship, safely, particularly in an inlet with fetch and wakes.
Scott, if they're gonna need to add two more variances, they'll have to come back?
Yes, it should go back to the Marine Advisory Board for, for a recommendation.
So if we approve what we have today, they still can't build their dock? I'm, I have to be honest with you, I'm a little confused.
No, I am too. It's, it sounds like if, if relief is required for two, two of the, what are they?
Waring piles.
Waring piles, then I would, I would want to take it to the Marine Advisory Board for their recommendation and then come back. So I guess it's, if you want to vote on this portion now...
Wait, wait, hang on, why don't we? We could table or postpone.
I would recommend that we, I would like to make a motion to postpone, whatever case number this is, for a set of drawings with all of... number this is, for a set of drawings with all of the proposed structures that are reviewed by the Marine Advisory Board.
All right, so we'll have to do this. If we postpone it, it'd be what, the May meeting?
Please talk into the microphone.
I am so sorry.
I'm sorry.
Ernie's not here to remind me. We'd have to do it the May or, or the June meeting?
I, I'm not sure when the M A B meets next.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Penny, you might know.
Dave might know. This is 2024. Oh, I think our March meeting was canceled, but it wouldn't be enough time to get on the March agenda. April 16th. Oh, yeah, March was canceled, but
Okay, so if it's April 16th, does that give them enough time, Martha, to go on the, on the May meeting?
I'd have to defer to Scott. He's the one.
I'm sorry, forgive me. I'm batting zero here.
Yes, if we can get a, if we can get a memo from the, the Marine Advisory Board Chair in a, in a timely manner, then yes, we can, we can get this on the June meeting.
Okay. Let me just talk to the applicant for a minute. I guess you've heard what we're talking about here. There's some issues and some concerns. So we, we have a motion, or we're about to make a motion, to postpone this until the May meeting, whereas during that time, you'll have an opportunity to do whatever you need to bring it up to SNF and get it before the Marine Advisory Committee, and then come back to us.
I would, I would request that we don't do that and that we make a motion, a motion to vote tonight, and that we have absolutely no objection to stipulation ensuring that there's mooring piles there. We have a marine facilities license, and that's a very difficult license to do, that specific
Okay. Let me, let me caution you here.
Because
Should you, you need six out of seven vote, a five out of se, um, six out of seven, let's say five out of six. Forgive me. I forget where I am today, which forum I'm at. If you're turned down, you can't come back for a year.
There's not an appeals process?
There is. I'm just suggesting.
You mean, I, I would just ask.
All right. It's your, if you don't want us to hear it today, you don't want us to delay it. I won't delay it. I'm just giving you the downside of hearing incomplete information.
Yeah, I think Penny's originally concerned was, does this require variance or not because it's a viewing platform? It's, we have a, we have a facilities license for seven slips, so it's very, very clear that it's not.
Understand, I understand what you're saying.
And we have no disagreement with providing mooring piles. I would, it sounded like from the, from the city attorney and from Scott's comments, that you could approve with a stipulation that we include mooring piles on the plans, and if that's a possible
I'm not, I, I, Scott?
If it requires relief, it should go back to the Marine Advisory Board, and I don't know.
That's the proper
For the city attorney, if you want to let them get a variance for some of these tonight or consider some of these items, or just take it back as one.
I think there was some ambiguity about whether or not the, the mooring piles would actually
Hang on just a second, counselor?
I, I, again, I draw back to what's the request before you. The request before you, there are three?
Yes.
There are three variances, very specific. I don't know, because again, I'm not technically inclined as it relates to these items. But if these items relate, the variance that they're requesting relate to the subject matter that has been discussed, that's one issue. If they do not relate to the subject matter that they're requesting, then I, I don't know what to tell the board, other than they made a request for variance and related to three items, and that's what's before you tonight.
So if we were to deny those three items, they can't come back for those three items for a year?
Correct.
Correct.
What's your call?
Those three items are not relative to these mooring piles, correct? The three items that were, if I understood you correct, what we're voting on has nothing to do with those three mooring piles, if I
The three items we're voting on are your, the things you're asking for in your application, in your variance request.
Right, which, which, which isn't, which isn't a variance request for the mooring piles. It's for the rest of the structure, if I'm understanding you guys correctly. So in other words, what we're asking you for a variance is not a, it's not being contested.
Well, we haven't approved it, so.
I just meant like the, the, the distance of the pier sticking out, the T, the T-style dock, that portion is
It is. Is it a dock? Is it a viewing platform?
It's a dock with slips.
I don't know. You don't have mooring piles. You don't have the piling that would, if I understand what Penny said. It's the piling that would make it into a dock. And you have no plan for a dock, therefore, I mean, you could construe that there's, you're not building a dock because you don't have a, you don't have pilings, therefore you have a viewing platform, not a dock. I don't mean
It feels, Mr. Chair, it feels like it's a safety concern. It feels like it would be a safety concern without the correct mooring piles, correct?
I, I, I'm, listen. You want us to go through it? I, I don't want to spend a whole lot more time.
I was just hoping to be practical, so I think if
We are, and we're being very, very practical and in abundance of caution. We're having it, you review it, and the Marine Advisory Committee can review it. They approved it up to this point, and we feel certainly better to follow the proper procedure, and that is that this type of request goes to the Marine Advisory Board, and we're not going to circumvent that unless you, unless you want to do it. I mean, this is, this is a different hearing, but.
Yeah, I just, it's unfortunate.
Okay, yea or nay? If, you, you want to postpone or not?
Let's postpone.
Okay. Do we have a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone.
And that would be to the, forgive me, that would be the May?
I believe Scott said the June meeting.
I'm sorry, June. June?
When was the Marine Advisory Board meeting?
I thought that was April.
April 16th.
Yeah, April.
April's, okay, so then we, April 18th is the deadline for the May 16th ZBA meeting. So if I get a Marine Advisory Board memo by April 18th, or very, very shortly thereafter, we can get on the May ZBA.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we will see you on May 16th, and
If, pardon me, and this will be re- noticed if there is an additional variance that
Thank you. About to ask you that. Okay, just, let's see, we've been sitting here for a while. Anybody want to take a break? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. And we're moved up to item
Mr. Chair, we're missing counsel currently.
I'm, I'm a counsel. No, I just did.
And I, I stayed at the Holiday Inn Express, so. So we'll start with Adam. I think we can make, I think we can make it through a good part of it. I, I did this once before. Item number, you can freeze me, item number four, L N 576, a variance for 33 Northwest 33rd Street Industrial LLC. It's a P and Z 24-11 000001. I like that number, you got the first one. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Ed Stacker, S T A C K E R, and I'm an attorney with Shudson Bowen LLP at 201 East Los Olas Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33301. And I have been sworn in.
We normally don't expect attorneys to be sworn in. We know, you have the bar and you're honest guys.
Thank you.
That's a, don't laugh, it's seriously, they have a bar oath and
There's a, I'm, I know you have a long agenda, but, but when, when I took the bar exam, I'm that old, there was not an ethics portion of the bar exam. Now there is one.
Does that make you exempt from the ethics?
Thankfully.
I say I, I pass the bar, but I don't have the ethics.
I was going to say, does that make you exempt from being ethical, or? All right. Mr. Reali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, and so this, the applicant landowner is requesting a variance from section 155 4228A 3AI and 155 4228A 3F, which are the outdoor storage screening standards of the Pompano Beach zoning code in order to allow materials stored in an outdoor storage yard to exceed the height of the screening wall or fence. The subject property is located on the north side of Northwest 33rd Street between Florida's Turnpike and Northwest 27th Avenue, behind the Festival Marketplace. The subject property was developed as an additional parking lot to serve the adjacent Festival Marketplace, or Festival Flea Market, as it was once called, immediately to its north in the early 1990s. The site currently has an active major temporary use permit to allow for overnight parking of commercial vehicles. That was approved through P and Z 22-15000013. Additionally, in October of 2022, the ZBA granted a special exception for outdoor storage as a principal use. That applicant, the applicant has since filed a major site plan application, which is P and Z 23-12000019, for an industrial project consisting of a two-story office building, one-story warehouse, and an outdoor storage area. During the Development Review Committee, the DRC review of the site plan, it was realized the applicant intends to store materials higher than the maximum allowable screening wall height of 10 feet. The applicant is thus requesting relief from the code provision that prohibits materials in an outdoor storage yard from exceeding the height of the required screening of, of the fence or wall. The applicant notes that the types of materials to be stored are large format components of scaffolding and formwork, platforms, and support systems that, when stacked, will be up to 20 feet in height. Further, the applicant suggests that in addition to installing a 10-foot-high opaque fence, the store, the outdoor storage yard will be screened from view by a number of factors, including the proposed warehouse, perimeter landscaping, landscape buffering that will be at least 26 feet wide along the two street frontages, and perimeter trees ranging between 10 and 22 feet in height. And to support their contention that the proposed screening will be sufficient, the applicant has included line-of-sight exhibits, suggesting that materials stacked 20 feet high will not be visible to the average passerby. There are eight variance review standards. They are concluded in the staff report. The applicant has addressed these eight review standards, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent, substantial evidence sufficient to satisfy those review standards, staff recommends the board include the following three conditions as part of the order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including a development order for a major site plan, which is P and Z 23-12000019, a zoning use certificate, and a business tax receipt. The applicant notes that the types of materials to be stored are large format components of scaffolding and form work platforms and support systems that, when stacked, will be up to 20 feet in height. Further, the applicant suggests that in addition to installing a 10-foot-high opaque fence, the outdoor storage yard will be screened from view by a number of factors, including the proposed warehouse, perimeter landscaping, landscape buffering that will be at least 26 feet wide along the two street frontages, and perimeter trees ranging between 10 and 22 feet in height. And to support their contention that the proposed screening will be sufficient, the applicant has included line-of-sight exhibits suggesting that materials stacked 20 feet high will not be visible to the average passerby. There are eight variance review standards. They are included in the staff report. The applicant has addressed these eight review standards. And should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent, substantial evidence sufficient to satisfy those review standards, staff recommends the board include the following three conditions as part of the order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including a development order for a major site plan, which is P and Z 23-12000019, a zoning use certificate, and a business tax receipt. Two, stacked materials shall not exceed a height of 20 feet. Three, in collaboration with the city's urban forester, revise landscape plan to provide superior and enhanced landscaping in excess of code requirements in areas where landscaping is provided specifically along the adjacent street frontages. And those are, that concludes my staff report. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reale. Counselor?
Yes, thank you very much. Also with me, by the way, this evening are Stephen Cooper and Brett Waldman with Bowler Engineering. Mr. Cooper is an engineer in charge of this project, and Brett Waldman is the landscape architect, if there are any questions related to that. And Stuart Foster with Doka, who is the end user, hopefully, on this site. Anecdotally, I'm not a, I don't subscribe to the Form Work Magazine, but Stuart brought one this evening and pointed out to me, and so this is an unsolicited. They are very involved in Habitat for Humanity. And in this document, there's a reference to Pompano Beach and how they're assisting there. So they're a good corporate citizen, and hopefully you all can look favorably upon this request. If you will look at that first aerial, I want to spend a couple of moments. Most of you, but I don't think all of you, may recall that this site did come up, as Scott said, in October of 2022. And it is approved today for outside storage and is used for overnight storage of commercial vehicles. The entire 10.23 acres site is asphalt and used for that use. After that approval, Doka USA, who makes form work scaffolding equipment, came to the parent company, Criterion Group LLC, and they negotiated to relocate or to locate a warehouse and an office building consisting of a little more than 45,000 square feet, 36,000 plus of the warehouse building, that actually is 31 feet in height, and a 9,000-plus-square-foot, two-story office building on the east side of this site, and use the remainder of the property on the large site. If you look at where it says site here, that and to the west would be the outdoor storage. Just to orient you, Sample Road up at the top, the landfill right across on the north side of Sample there. And you see the turnpike and the turnpike exit coming off. And the, there is a warehouse down to the extreme southwest of this aerial. And then coming to the east, that's a transmission, gas and electric transmission parcel. And then there's warehouses south of this property. There's the lake to the north and the service side of the Festival Flea Market building to the north of the lake. I wanted, I just quickly have a couple of scenes here that show views from 27th Avenue, which this property is contiguous to and to the west of, and also 33rd Street, which this property is contiguous to and immediately north of. Our request, as Scott said, is to ask for relief from the provision, that provisions that require that outdoor materials may not be taller than the fence or screening. And the maximum for the height for the fence and screening is 10 feet, although there will be a lush landscaping that will be provided. And I think Wade Cullum, the urban forester, is probably gonna assure, as they're going through the site plan process right now. And there will be extensive landscaping as well. Years ago, it's my understanding that Pompano Beach had a line-of-sight ordinance that we're asking you to recognize, if you will, in reality, as a reason that someone from the right-of-way on 33rd Street or 27th Avenue would be looking in towards the site that, based on a line-of-sight, they really won't see the materials, the outdoor storage materials, from that vantage point. And if you go back to the, I was trying to go back to the aerial. There's no reason for pedestrians to walk back in that area. It's just built out I-1 property and industrial warehouse. I do want you to take notice, though, of the configuration of this 10.23 acre parcel. It is like a, we refer to it as a flag and pole laid down. You see, there's about 1,000 feet going east to west, and only 320 feet of width, north and south, which lends itself to, or I would say is a unique parcel and a warehouse parcel that cause, that results in the need to be creative for development and use under the I-1 category. And I think it distinguishes itself from other I-1 properties when we get into the Criterion, that, so that you don't have to worry about every property coming in and trying to do this. This is, depicts Bowler's overall site plan of the property. And you can see the yellow office building on the east side. And I think there's 79 parking spaces around that building. And then there's, the warehouse building is situated further to the west. The bulk of the outdoor storage will be further west of the warehouse, but there will be some between the east side of the warehouse and the office building, a limited amount. That just gives you an idea. This is like the elevation, a typical elevation. This is north and west elevation of the warehouse. This is south and east elevation of the warehouse. And here is a cutout of the landscape plan that shows along 27th Avenue and along 33rd to the south, and that's the office building. So if you can picture your viewing from 27th Avenue, looking to the west, you're going to have, you have the 10-foot tall fence, you have landscaping that will, in some instances, be higher than that. You then have a separation, and you have the office building. And then, it's a number, it's a long distance before you get to outside storage. So from 27th Avenue, in a minute I'll show you the line-of-sight, you can't see stacking. While I'm talking about the product, scaffolding and form work, we can take, we don't use judicial notice, but we can take personal knowledge of the rapid growth in South Florida. And while there is not a whole lot of additional unmakeant industrial land, this product is used for all types of construction purposes. And what they do is they bring their materials into the warehouse and say they were on a job and that had been used in Boca. And they bring it in and do fine tuning of it to get it ready. And then it moves out into the outdoor storage area. And typically, you could have a 20-foot-tall, if we were to get approval, stack of scaffolding at 9:00 tomorrow morning. And it would be out and down to 4 feet by 3:00 in the afternoon. And somebody may come, then they'll come in and reload and bring things out from the warehouse, back out, and it's turnaround, turnaround constantly. So it won't always be up to 20 feet in height, but it could go up to 20 feet.
I have a question. Securing the materials, so that if we're, let's just say we're in a high-wind situation, a hurricane situation, how do we make sure that these materials are secured and not taken into wind and become projectiles potentially?
Well, you know, I'm gonna, I would be BSing you to answer that question. I don't know. Stuart, is there?
I'm sorry, if he's gonna testify, he needs to come up here.
He has not been sworn in.
No, if he needs to testify, he needs to come here. Thank you, Counselor. Just come on up to the microphone. And if you would, please give us your first and last name.
Stuart Foster.
Spell your last.
F O S T E R.
Address. And I understand you've been sworn in.
There you go. Our equipment, most of it is very heavy, steel.
Can you please move the microphone?
I have not been sworn in.
I thought you said he was sworn in. Forgive me. Please raise your right hand.
Okay, but make sure you're talking in the microphone. And there's two ladies also that I'd like to swear in at the same time. You wanna stand up and raise your right hand?
Anybody else who thinks they might want to testify tonight? If you please, stand up and raise your right hand. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our equipment is steel beams primarily. So it's by weight of its size and the way we stack it. Can anything ever become a projectile in the world? Yes. Is it likely? No. And so we also make sure that if we end up in a high-wind situation, that we might spread things out and do some different anchoring to them in a dramatic storm. But it's not an issue that we deal with.
Is this commonplace for you, that you have these stacks of 20 in open-air areas?
Yes. That's what our industry does. Otherwise, we'd need 45, 50 acres.
Where were you before?
We've got branches in Florida now. Here in Pompano, we have branches all around the country.
You have a place here in Pompano now?
Yeah, we do.
Are you stacking equipment?
Yes.
In open air?
Over 20 feet?
Yes.
Where is that?
Off Martin Luther King.
I'm sorry?
Off Martin Luther King.
Okay. Clearly that's-
As your lawyer, you don't have to answer. No, I'm-
You don't know.
I mean, it's the same situation as a crane company. You drive down the street and you see a crane company sitting there, and their cranes are sticking up in the air. I mean, there's the way you have to stack this stuff.
I understand. Okay. Answered that question?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor, you wanna, you can keep going.
I'm sorry?
Keep going.
Okay, I'd be happy to. So the slide up, that's up now, is showing the landscaping on the south side of the warehouse. And then this is the fencing and landscaping further to the west. The, I have a few line-of-sight illustrations, but I think the better one would be one here. It's because there's color in it. You can see the yellow on the south side of, up on the north, you see the yellow highlighted. And that's the view that you were looking at. The bottom view from a car is beneath the top of the tree line. And the line-of-sight illustrates that you wouldn't see the materials because there is separation from the right-of-way and to the wall. There's a 26-foot landscape width that is, straddles the wall. And then you've got internal traffic circulation. And those are important to point out because the fire department has approved their site plan for turning movements. And the trucks and the equipment that they use have to be able to navigate, if you will, on the outside. So it's not all just stacked materials in there. You have, it's a design and an organized plan to have the materials. They can come in, like I said, put additional materials out there. Others will come and take them away. So, but this is a line-of-sight from 33rd Street. This is the line-of-sight from the second 33rd Street entrance, or square, if you were rectangle there. And you'll, the same thing. You, the line-of-sight will preclude you seeing the materials. And then this is the view from 27th. And you can see, at the bottom, you can even see the line-of-sight is, goes way above even the roof of the, 32-foot roof of the office building. So, we think that the intended purpose of the provisions in the code is to mitigate adverse viewing, if you will, from the, for the public on the outside of property. And we think it's, these lines of sight illustrate that it has been, it will be mitigated by its virtue of an inability to see it through the landscaping, et cetera.
Counselor, you offered a number of different height things here, but I didn't see anything off of I-95.
I-95's nowhere near this.
I'm sorry, the turnpike. You're-
You can't see this property from the turnpike.
It appears you can from the map we're seeing.
Well, I-
Or Google Map. It's on the entrance and the exit.
You see, the, okay, well, I was talking about if you're coming north on the turnpike and there's the warehouse that goes all the way up on the southwest corner of that. And there's the transmission lines, and then there's the property. You could see, but the buffering goes all the way around. The fence and the landscaping goes all the way around this entire property.
Thank you.
Obviously, today, you can see the commercial vehicles parked there. And that flagpole, the most westerly portion, will probably not be used except for vehicular parking because it's not wide enough to afford stacking of materials in that area.
I'm sorry. I'm just not sure personally how this is a hardship, and why a variance would be needed for this. You know, what you're telling us is how they operate their business, but it doesn't cause a- a hardship that they're varying, you're not proving a hardship to me.
Well, let me, let me go through the criteria, if I might. That's where I would beg to differ with you. It, our narrative is included in your backup, but when I asked you to take a look...
And I've read, I've read your narrative, but even that doesn't showcase to me how this would be a hardship.
The hardship is that we have a unique parcel that is more narrow than the normal industrial parcel. And it is not of our doing. It was platted 20 years ago, as, as a 10-acre parcel, and it's been used for parking over the years.
Yeah, and when the initial plan was agreed to, it was to provide overnight parking, and now the plans have changed for the company there, again, it doesn't create, it doesn't show me a hardship of why they need this variance for this particular parcel.
Well, with all due respect, I don't agree, because the first criteria says there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions such as topographic conditions, narrowness, shallowness, or the shape of a parcel of land that do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity. I, I believe that we can adequately demonstrate that that's, that's the case. It's a long, narrow parcel, and it's surrounded by either transportation use, transmission use, or other warehouses, and there are no pedestrians walking by. And it is, I am talking about operational needs, but, but I think it's the parcel itself. As Stuart said, you'd have to find perhaps a 40-acre parcel to be able to, to lay the materials out differently. Now...
If I could stop you for just a minute.
Sure.
As we go back to uniqueness and hardship, Scott, sorry, I don't mean to give you a quick one here. What else can go on this property?
A myriad of uses permitted in the I-1 zoning district.
There'd be two, just two.
Just two. All right, all right. Let me just pull up my consolidated...
Parking, parking for one.
Okay. We have, we have...
Arrow warehouses.
Almost all healthcare uses are permitted by right. Boat, marine repair, boat service rentals, business support services, commercial recreation. Let's see, we have...
There, there's a lot of stuff that could go in there.
All the motor vehicle sales and service uses are permitted by right.
Okay. And, and Scott, should we grant a variance here that would allow stacking equipment 20 feet? And this tenant, I'm assuming it's a tenancy?
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming it's a tenancy?
Yes.
And this tenant moves out, can we get, I don't know, a junkyard with the 20-foot non, you know, with, with, what else could go in there without having to have exposed? I mean, that, that's a concern. You know, these variances go with the land.
They go with the land, but we can, can, we, one of the conditions, recommended conditions is substantial compliance to the, the major site plan that was submitted. So you could argue that if that site plan does not get implemented, then the variance is, is...
If you, if you had to do...
Excuse me. And the second part to that is there are a lot of uses, so the variance, well, all right, I tell you what, that's good, Scott. We, we would just do as a condition?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
From memory, I, I remember we, we looked at this parcel. I know we gave it a variance for the vehicle parking, but I remember...
Temporary.
Yeah, right. I remember there was a proposal for something that we didn't approve as well. Do you remember? Can someone remind me what that was?
Well, the first time this came about, it was denied, and then there was, I believe there was a request for rehearing, and then at that point, the temporary use permit was approved. And then subsequent to that, a special exception was filed to, to make it a more permanent thing without...
There was something, I, I remember there was something that was proposed, but we said, you know, the Festival Flea Market Mall was still there, and we would reconsider it if that use was no longer there.
I believe that was the, the initial temporary use permit where we did not have the clarification that the two are no longer joined, joined together.
The, Ms. Scott, just to refresh your recollection, because I was here at the time, the initial time that we came in for the major temporary use, the board denied it. And it was, there was new information that was provided to your all's satisfaction that there was no connection and no use of this parcel to the flea market parcel.
Okay.
And there was, it was, so you all approved it, and the entire, again, 10 acres of parking are for commercial vehicles. In the interim, Doka has come in, and the owner thought that now we've got a business more than just surface asphalt parking, and it would be looked at favorably by the city, of course. And we have been running the site plan through, and I think it even went to DRC as recently as yesterday for a second or third time. And, and we're working our way through that, and we'll satisfy all of those conditions. I have no problem, and I would, I would argue, as Mr. Saunders, that if Doka moved out and someone else wanted to come in, they would, depending on the use, they would have to have a site plan approval. And you couldn't have a, you certainly wouldn't have a junkyard or something like that. And this is a unique parcel that we believe we have mitigated any visual concerns that the 10-foot elevation height is intended to preclude. Now, I'm perfectly happy to go on through the enumerated conditions, but we believe we satisfy all of them. And we look, we would request that you all consider this request favorably, recognizing that we, there will be times when we need to go higher than the 10 feet, and it, and the public out there surrounding it won't even know it. It'll never go as high as, as the landfill, obviously, but it, it could go up to 20 feet and go down and up and down. But that's, that's the, we think it makes fundamental sense on a parcel that is configured in this fashion to use it this way, and our, our hardship is the inability to do anything differently with this parcel.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in support of the petitioner? Here, yes, sir? Oh, you, you work for him. Okay, I got it. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition? Again, hearing none. Martha, any correspondents?
No.
Thank you. Closing comments?
I, I think I summarized it. We, we believe that the spirit and the intent of the code and the comp plan, for example, the comp plan asks you to keep industrial away from residential. There's no residential within a mile of this site. They want you to put industrial uses close to major transportation corridors, and you've got, as you pointed out, the turnpike and Sample Road. And we think that there is, because of the landscaping and the setback areas from the right-of-way, that there will not be any issue with them going up higher than the 10 feet, period. So we are asking that you look favorably upon this request.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Board discussion. Any discussion?
Personally, to me, with the, with the understanding that this business needs this hardship to operate in this particular area, you know, I'm just not sure that it's maybe the right business for this area, because it doesn't create, it, it, there are other things that could go there.
I, I, I agree. When you look at basically rectangular piece of property, you know, I know it's got the little flag handle or flagpole or whatever, you know, there's, you can see just in, in that picture, there are other warehouses that would certainly fit into that area. I'm concerned, as I do, and somebody made the comment of the bucket trucks and other equipment that's left in the upright position. All, most of those places had variances from us that required them to be in the downward position.
Yes, either that or heavy equipment establishments are not subject. That's different than outdoor storage.
Right.
So they, they don't...
But, but that's, and we're aware of some of those. And the problem is, you don't qualify for variance, and I wouldn't, any business, you know, is it gonna be 10 feet above the line? Is it gonna be 20 feet? Is it gonna go up? Is it gonna be down? If it, we could get to that, I don't see a hardship. I think it's self-inflicted.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's my thought.
Scott, I have a question. If they built a warehouse large enough to store all this stuff, would they need a variance?
No.
No, no, it would be completely inside the, the facility, then they would not need a variance.
The site couldn't...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've closed the public hearing.
I, I apologize.
It's okay.
You said I didn't have to be sworn in. I thought I was the African.
No, we did, we did close the public hearing. Okay. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion. In P&amp;Z case 241100001, I move we find that there is competent and substantial evidence in the record that all requirements for granting the variance have been met, and that we grant the variance subject to the three, am I right about the three? Condition is requested by staff.
Second. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Martha, please call the roll.
Richard Dowley?
No.
James Bun?
No.
Charlotte Burry?
No.
Nicole Kopak?
No.
Penny Cutt?
No.
Dan Yaffe?
No. Denied.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, what time, it's eight o'clock. This is one of our longer nights. Item number five, L-N 577, a variance for Andy Hasbrook, P&amp;Z 24-1100002. We, we heard case one, and we heard, now we're hearing case two of the year. Hi, everyone.
Question for you. I'm, I'm a flash.
Okay. Use my American Express card, I need the points. I need 70,000 points. I won't get 70,000.
No, she needs to get you a bonus.
Oh, that's 8,000.
8,000.
I can be honest with you, I may do tomorrow. No, literally, go to Germany. I'm taking a trip to Germany. October.
Chips, chips are for dinner tonight, guys.
Going to racetracks.
Dan says he's, he's ordering burgers for all of us right now. Five guys.
Five guys.
We're doing five guys.
Tonight? Oh, sorry, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we're, we're just waiting on you.
We were waiting for the technology to get finished.
I heard this is a technology issue, I turned around. Okay. This is, again, I'm gonna call it, is number five, L-N 577, a variance, Andy Hasbrook, P&amp;Z 24-110002. And is, are one of you Juliette, Celeste?
I'm Juliette, Celeste.
Okay. Okay. Who's gonna be doing the initial?
Andy.
Okay. So would you please tell us your name, spell your last name, give me your address, and tell me if you've been sworn in?
I've been sworn in. My name is Andy Hasbrook. Last name is spelled H-A-S-B-R-O-K. My address is eventually 3215 Canal Drive in Pompano Beach 33062.
Okay, great. And Mr. Ray Ali, what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the applicant landowner is requesting a variance from section 155 4302B2G, which are the prohibited location of accessory structures of the Pompano Beach zoning code in order to allow a swimming pool to be located in front of a principal structure. The subject property is located on the north side of Canal Drive on the barrier island between North Riverside Drive and North Ocean Boulevard. The subject property was originally developed in the mid-1950s with periodic additions and renovations over the years. The primary structure has received building permit approval for total demolition. That's BP 236911. A separate permit for a new duplex is in, is, is currently in plan review. That's BP 234375. And those plans propose a swimming pool in the front of the principal structure, setback approximately 38 feet from the front lot line, which is Canal Street. It's important to note that the proposed location of the swimming pool is not located within the required front yard setback, which is the first 25 feet from the front lot line. However, most accessory uses and structures, even if not located within a required setback, may not be located in front of a principal structure, and that's the specific relief being sought. If the subject property was located on a corner lot or a through lot, the proposed pool location would be permitted by right. The applicant's narrative contends that the properties along this block are technically waterfront and that each property has an additional sliver of land and dockage rights on the south side of the Canal Drive right-of-way. Because most waterfront homes have their swimming pools oriented toward the water, the applicant believes this to be a logical and appropriate location for a swimming pool and would offer the, which would offer more sun exposure. There are, should note, there are two open cases tied to the property, one's regarding unpermitted dock area construction, that's case 2309003100, and one for vegetation overgrowth and the property disrepair, that's case number 2309002262. Both violations will likely be remedied in the near future as a dock and piles permit, BP 240755, was recently approved, and work associated with the aforementioned demo permit will most likely nullify the other violations. Again, we have Mr. Mario Sotjolongo here from Code Enforcement that can speak to that in further detail. As you know, there are eight variance review standards. The applicant has provided responses to each of them, and should the board determine that the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence sufficient to satisfy the variance review standards, staff recommends the board include the following three conditions as part of the order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals. Two, close out the two open code cases, again, 2309003100 and 2309002262. And the third recommended staff condition is to substantial compliance to the plans submitted. Swimming pool shall be set back a distance of approximately 38 feet from the lot line, front lot line, which is Canal Street. And that concludes staff's report. There is, there is development on the property right now, but they, they are planning on doing a new duplex, demo and duplex. I don't know if everything will be demoed, but yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, your microphone.
There's three structures currently on the property. They're all coming down.
Okay. We're ready to hear from you. Scott, did you finish?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Scott, tell us why you're here.
So hello, thank you very much for hearing this. Basically, we've, the area is owned for four, but because of the non-conforming lot size, we couldn't even build three. So we are now building a single-family home with, you know, a little apartment for family to come visit when they're in town. So it's deemed a duplex. But it's, the lot is, it's an odd-shaped lot, so it's been very challenging to try to configure... It's an odd-shaped lot, so it's been very challenging to try to configure how I'm going to build on this with the non-conforming lot. I'm building green. I have a local contractor that's building for us that's located here in Pompano. We're doing a SIPs build, trying very hard to beautify the area and keep in... And with respect to the neighborhood itself, as people are coming in and they're demoing a lot of the properties, we're also, and I'm sure that my neighbors may not be aware of this, but we're very much wanting to be good stewards of the neighborhood, right? We're raising the lot line per the new codes for the street floods a few times a year. Nothing to do with my house. It's got everything to do with King Tide. And so the house that we purchased has been getting wet since the 50s. And so that's why we decided not to try to rebuild it. It was just... It just wasn't worth investing that into that project. But we are increasing the elevation of the lot. We are building up in that regard. We're also repairing the dock as per the permit. We've been working on that since November. And so we're trying to do whatever we can to make the neighborhood even more enticing than it is now. And again, going green as well, which is really important to myself and hopefully to the neighborhood as well. So I... We're really looking to just make sure that this property conforms with everything, but because of the lot, that's been the biggest challenge. It truly has. So we have some... Well, the trees too, because we've had some issues with landscaping department. So we're trying very hard to keep in line with them. They've asked us if it's possible to leave the trees on the lot, so we've agreed to do that. And of course, now that trees are going to remain on the lot, they're all in the backyard predominantly. So it's really... The front of the house is where the pool really ideally needs to be. And we have some pictures and some other aerial photography to kind of show what it will look like when it's done. It's going to be beautiful. And it's going to be... We're going to have a retaining wall.
Can you go back to the last picture and just point out your house?
Please move the microphone over for you.
I'm sorry. And I need your name.
I'm Juliette Sallet.
In the microphone, please.
Juliette Sallet.
And spell it.
S and C, M, A, L, L, E, T, T, E.
And your address, please.
4502 Martin Iguay, G3 Coconut Creek, Florida.
Great. And have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our house is the third house from the corner.
So it already has a pool.
No, no, this is rendering. These are renderings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the word rendering.
These are renderings, yes.
Okay. You're on that one-way street that kind of curves around?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I used to ride my bike back there.
So what we did, we did not want you guys to like wander with the 2D that our architect and engineers drew, so we did a render for you. So... And this just shows you the house itself without the other houses. Okay? And this is a render of what the pool would look like from the inside. One thing that's important to note is that on our plans, we have a six-foot privacy fence that's all the way around. So from the street, no one really can see that there's a pool here. Okay? So in terms of children coming in, unless they get invited in, they will not be in the property. Okay? And then there's like another fence, as you can see, on the west side, another fence. Also, there is a retaining wall, which is our engineer, who is James Bushhouse. He has said he would... In terms of our water, water on our property is going to be staying in because the retaining wall. So it will be a two-foot retaining. Okay? And then, as you can see, there is... Per code, we have the parking in the front. Yes, parking in the front. So you can't see that there's a pool. You really cannot see that there's a pool from the street. Another thing to mention is that the engineer wanted me to stress that because the elevation is being built up, right now, the elevation, according to the surveyor, I think it was like 2.78, when we build this up, the pool is going to be at like five and a half. So they're going to be much elevated. And in terms of when Andy first bought the property, she did her due diligence and whatnot, and what she found is that the dock, the seawall, the seawall needs to be like raised, correct?
Yeah. And before I purchased the property, the neighbors were given an opportunity to raise the seawall, and they opted not to do that. So they're concerned about water coming in, but not so concerned as to invest in a higher seawall to help that process along. We're trying to do everything we can in our power for our property to make sure that our property doesn't flood, right? But at the same time that the neighbors don't have an issue with that because of the retaining wall, they won't have that. So we're... Everything will be up to code. Everything will be going before the city. I mean, we're not doing anything just solo, right? Everything has to be approved and looked at for engineering purposes, et cetera. So we've done our due diligence. We actually, prior to even the build, we brought it to the city to discuss. My builder went to the city and asked them, you know, about certain things, if the SIPs panels would be approved. So we got verbal approval to move forward with the way that we had been projecting to build. And so the plans have been at the city now for quite some time, and we've been waiting for them to be approved, and they've been returned, I think, twice with some comments that we've worked on and we readdressed. Most of it was landscaping, and so we readdressed those, but nothing was said about the pool being in the front until just now. So we're just wait... Wait a minute, we're like 99% ready to do this, and now we're here before you.
Scott?
Leading our case.
Where else could they put the pool on that property?
The pool would be permitted by right in the back of the property, in the rear. But the design of the proposed plans have the duplex setback, so... So that's why they are requesting relief. But if the duplex were moved forward, you could put the pool in the back.
So you're saying the only place it could go without variance, because we've done... We did a front yard before, is in the back of the house?
I mean, I'd have to see the plans that are... A reconfigured plan, but yeah. I mean, basically, for... If they're trying to do a duplex, you probably can't do it on the side. So you probably have to go.
What are other properties in the area like?
I have a few pictures.
Okay. Most are in the rear. They're... If it's a corner lot, they... The code now allows that by right. There was a time when they needed a variance if it was a corner lot. But now that's permitted by right. Generally speaking, pools are located in... Behind a house, not between the house.
Right. I was wondering, because of the canal and everything, if that was something more common in that area. But, you know, I asked, Scott, why don't you tell me? You've probably looked it up already.
Well, there are some houses that have the pool in the front since the variance or since the code has changed. But, you know, we have... In our design plan, we had pushed the house all the way to the back. What's behind the house right now is very old outdated apartment buildings. And so, you know, we want to enjoy our property right as best as we can. So we pushed the house back to the back lot with everything facing forward, to the canal. The canal... I don't know... I know you're familiar with Canal Drive, but I'm not sure that everybody else is. The waterway is in front of the street, really. It's a very odd property. It may be one of the few here in Pompano that are like that. So the boats are parked in front of the house. Everything that we're building is geared towards looking towards the water as best as.
I don't like going down Hillsborough Mile. You've got the houses on the left and the docks on the right, but the houses are a little smaller. A1A in Hillsborough Beach. You know, where they have houses on one side? This is a real... It's a... I know the street. It's west of Ocean, North Ocean, and north of 14th Street. It's just a real... You can kind of see the map, how the street goes. Yeah.
It's a one-way street, so it's no through traffic.
I used to ride my bike. Like I said, it was less chance of getting killed.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Is this primary residence, or is it... Yeah?
Absolutely. I'm not an investor. I'm not doing an Airbnb. I'm not a, you know, backed up by an attorney's firm. I'm just me as a single... Look, I've been in Pompano forever. I mean, I was here when band used to play down at the pier. So I love Pompano. I just love being here, and my dream has always been to buy a property here that I could really kind of make into my own, and this is it. So here we are. I think there's more pictures.
Right. There's one thing that's important to note, and we spend a lot of time with landscape. There are two trees, and I don't like have pictures of the two trees. There are two ginormous trees in the back, and they are situated on our property, but then they're also on the other people's property. So we can't just cut the trees down. Even though our arborists look, okay, you have to get rid of the trees. We want to do everything to protect those trees. They're old. They're strangler figs, correct? Strangler figs. And with that and the roots and everything, that is prohibiting the pool. I know people think, oh, just like it does prohibit the pool. And even if you do like with a setback, it's just you can't really have that there because of the... They're ginormous trees. So... And if we take them off of our property, we really have to get the other neighbors on the other adjacent properties to agree to let us to come into their properties. So it's just better and landscaping...
It's a hardship.
Landscaping really... We went through a lot of gyrations. Keeping the trees is the best thing that landscaping.
Yep. You mentioned in the beginning that Wade Collum was out there, and he told you you're not supposed to cut down those trees. Is that correct?
Oh, right. We're not cutting down the trees.
Yeah, we're not. We're leaving the trees.
Well, that's what's in your backyard.
Yes.
Right. But I think you mentioned that... Well, he's the urban forester now.
Wade.
Wade, if he's been there to see the trees and they can't be cut down and they're old, then you couldn't put a pool back there, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the utility lines are overhead as well.
But in our yard, where how the roots are, the roots and the bad portion, not bad portion, but you can't just... They're in our yard, but then we need the other people's permission to go into their yards.
All right. This is a... This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak or in support of the petitioner? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Come on forward, both of you, please. And come to the center... The first one will come to the center podium. And I'll need you to give me your name, spell your last, address, and have you been sworn in.
My name is Jeremiah Jones.
You can lift the microphone. Tall.
My name is Jeremiah Jones. I'm the property owner at 3221 Canal Drive. I'm also an attorney, and I did swear in, so I don't know if I need to do that or not. This is my wife, Nicole.
You're speaking specifically... You're not representing someone here, are you?
No.
Okay.
Well, technically, not as an attorney, but there's three properties on the street that are objecting. We sent in correspondence.
Okay. You've been sworn. Don't worry about it. Nicole, are you going to... Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Nicole Jones, 3221 Canal Drive in Pompano Beach, Florida 33062.
A little bit louder and spell your last.
Jones, J-O-N-E-S.
Oh, okay. All right. Who wants to talk first?
Sure. So...
Did you write a letter, by the way?
Yeah, I did. Did you have a chance to read it?
Not on this... Well, I was thinking on another... One of the other...
This is the one that speaks to flooding.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I know, I remember. Somebody wrote a real... A long, lengthy...
Yeah. That was me. That was me. It was on behalf of...
I read it.
Oh, thank you. So it was on behalf of myself and the two adjoining properties still left of us. But so, you know, this is not an irregular-shaped property. I know there's an... It is awkward that it has a three-foot sliver or so that has canal, gives riparian rights to everybody that owns that property. But when you take that away, it's a rectangle property. And so if you look down the street, everybody with a pool, it's in the backyard. And so it's not... I can't think of anything that's extraordinary or exceptional that could cause you to have to put the pool in the front yard. So I heard a lot about...
I can talk to the trees. I do.
Okay, why don't we... Look, you talk first and then...
Sure. So that's the first prong to gain the variance. And so you look to the properties in the vicinity. And so the properties in the vicinity are, of course, mine off to the right, maybe the two houses down. So you look at 3225 and 3229, and they're all the same shape, very similar size, trees. We all share the same utility line. And so I just don't see why the need would exist to put the pool in the front of the house. So I just... I just don't see the exceptional circumstances that this property does not share with every house in this street.
Thank you.
So that's the first bullet. So I think the other meaty part of the test is the property damages may cause. So if you look at their plans, that pool is probably 20 feet away from our structure, right? So when you build a pool, you know, it doesn't displace the water like soil would or a structure. So it just would roll over it. So when the canal floods, it goes over the canal and over the seawall into the properties, but it also comes up from the ground.
It goes over.
Yeah. So when it comes up, if there's a pool, it's taking up 25,000 gallons of space. That is going to add to the floodwater, and that can be the difference of it going into our crawl space. And we've spent $30,000 in the last year because we know it floods every year. So we're trying to prevent the black mold in our house. We're trying to prevent the water from coming into the crawl space.
How would that differ if the pool was in the backyard?
Because if you can pull my correspondence, I can show you. Because we have a construction... We have new construction next door, and the new construction dug down three to four feet. And so you can see a good amount of water in the front where they had trouble actually constructing the building because there was so much water. But towards the back of where the structure is, there's not so much water anymore. And then if you go another 30 or 40 feet, there's their pool, right? 30 or 40 feet, there's their pool. Right? So if you put the pool in the front, there's more water because the canal comes and saturates that soil. And then if you put the pool in the back, that water would never even get to the pool. So if you put the pool in the front, the water comes up and the water's displaced by the pool. So that's.
So that's at the front of the.
That's the front. So you can see how much water, that's, that's no rain, that's no flood, that's just a sunny day a week ago. Right? And see.
And that's the back.
So that water is always there.
And that's about.
And if you look at the back, there's almost barely any water there.
That's to the, towards the beach. There's their house, our house.
Okay. I won't get too technical.
I just don't.
What's the depth of the lot?
I'm sorry?
What's the depth of the lot?
I don't, I don't have the survey with me, but I know.
What's the depth of your lot?
It's the same as theirs.
Do you have the survey?
I can pull it up.
Okay.
Lots of not the same size.
No, ours is wider, but the depth is.
Yeah.
You need to speak in the microphone, please, for.
I was just going to say the, our lot is wider.
You gotta pull it down.
Microphone, please. Pull it down if you need to.
Our lot is wider, but the depth is the same. I've just got the survey here. I don't know.
Another question?
According to this survey provided, the property line, the width is 63.78 along Canal Drive, and the property depth is 128 feet.
Yeah, that's, ours is also 128 feet.
Thank you.
If you scroll up in the correspondence, you can see all the properties and how similar they are and where their pools are located. There's no need to put it in the front. I just don't understand why there would be that, reason to do that. I mean, we need exceptional, extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances. We have, you need extraordinary and exceptional circumstances. And, you know, if you read her application, the reason she gives is it's better sun in the front, you know? So it's like, you know, I, that sounds pretty ordinary to me. So sometimes when the sun goes down and I'm in the backyard, it's time to move to the front yard if I want to continue sunbathing.
All right. One more.
I can talk to the trees. The tree specifically that they're worried about and that can't cut down, it actually overhangs over our hot tub and pool. If the overhead was back, I could show you. But so that, the roots would be underneath our pool. The roots would be underneath our hot tub. It's literally like.
Just a quick question. Are you an arborist or do you have?
My father's an architect and we had a construction company and I loved landscaping and was involved in that without, within our company.
But do you have any evidence to showcase that the roots would be under your pool?
No, other than that I'm there every day. And it, the tree is right, if this was the line, the lot line, the tree is right there. And our pool is right there. I don't know if you can see it on the overhead, but, you know, and then also their new plans don't show them keeping the tree. It shows all concrete paved areas. It also shows that they're keeping the current paved driveway. That's not, I, I thought there had to be a certain amount of percentage of green space to allow for the water to recede through. So they're adding.
That'll go with the site, when they do the site plan, they'll review all the permeability.
Yeah. So I know that that probably was grandfathered in, oops, sorry, but given that they're raising the entire lot, wouldn't they have to do a new application for the driveway to?
I.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just.
There's, I mean, they're putting in all kinds of.
It's just a concern I have.
You're concerned about permeability?
No, I'm, I'm concerned about the water and, and the fact that it's.
Well, that's permeability.
Yeah.
Okay, what, guys, I think you've made your point. You don't like it. You don't think that, let me summate.
I don't have a problem if it's like in the back.
You don't think that they deserve it?
No, I'm really concerned that my house is gonna fall.
I can show you a video, like our, we have a four car deep garage. And when we get king tide and rain, which happens probably twice a year, I'm in water up to here at the back of my.
And I totally understand. I get king tides also. But what does, what does the king tide have to do with this application?
They're adding 25,000 gallons to that of water. And then that's also.
They're entitled to build, I mean, they're entitled to build a pool.
It, well, if it's in the back, the water doesn't reach the back.
You know, unless we're, we're now picking nits here because I can't tell you, if they put it 25 foot beyond or 25 foot beyond or 50 foot beyond, I don't know what, what the water's gonna do.
When it, when it's in the backyard, we don't flood in our backyard. We flood in the front. So that's where they're wanting to add more water.
I'm not an expert. That's why I'm asking you, you know, what, if they build a pool, they could put it anywhere. I mean, they can put a pool.
They can put it in the back anyway.
They can put a pool in the back by right. That's gonna displace the same amount of water.
The floodwater doesn't reach the back. We've lived there since 2016.
It never reaches the backyard.
I can.
I, I, I'm not a hydrologist. Is that the right word, Penny?
Can I show you some more?
Hydrogeologist. Okay.
I have a lot of more pictures and videos of flooding.
I've let you guys go. I understand. You wrote a brilliant description. We don't need to go, you know, we've done it. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for participating.
Thank you so much.
We certainly have heard you.
Question here.
Writing and, do you have a question for them?
No.
Okay.
Staff. Scott, when Wade spoke with the applicant and established that the tree shouldn't be cut down, is there any evidence or proof or showcase of where the root system might be, or if it's a, if a problem is gonna be caused if they build the pool in the backyard due to the trees? The applicant claims it, but I'm just wondering if we have anything from staff?
I don't have anything. And I, and typically it would just be pictures and conjecture. I, I, you know, I.
I've dealt with Wade. I know Wade's more than pictures and conjecture.
Scott, I'll just ask you a quick question. Or Penny, either one of you wants to jump on this one. There was an assertion that building a pool in one location would be better or worse than another location on the same property for flooding. Is there any basis to that?
I, I am not.
You'd have to do a study or?
Specialist in that, in that regard. I do know, you know, that the front yard is closer to canal, the canal itself, but I don't know.
Okay. I don't either. Penny, did you have anything to say to that?
Our geology in this area is generally limestone, which is extremely porous. And as much as we have tidal flooding, we also have groundwater flooding. And as the tidal floods, that pushes the groundwater up through as well. As the, the city and everybody in Broward County was mandated to implement a tidal flood barrier ordinance. And that is going to stop tidal floodwater, but it's not going to stop the groundwater from coming up through limestone. That was the reason I questioned the depth of the lots. When we've got a lot that's about 120 feet deep, the difference between what you've got in the front yard and shifting that pool a few feet to the backyard isn't really gonna make a substantial difference in my professional opinion. Granted, I'm a marine biologist, not a hydrogeologist, but I have dealt quite a bit with resiliency and tidal flood barriers and, and flooding issues in the marine environment. You know, I don't really see a big difference. My guess would be, my professional guess would be that they're seeing a little less flooding in the back mainly because the elevation in the back might be a little bit higher than the elevation in the front. I will say, you know, I was gonna ask what the species of trees were, but I heard it mentioned earlier that there were strangler figs and they do have pretty aggressive root systems. I would have some concerns with the strangler fig roots potentially interfering with the pool piping and plumbing and causing them problems over time. I'm not sure, you know, strangler figs are pretty resilient. If they had an arborist properly root prune the tree over time, eventually they could probably put the pool in the back. I'm not so sure what the regulations are with respect to overhead power lines. And digging a pool, I know with heavy equipment, you can't have heavy equipment within a certain distance of the overhead power lines. So I'm not sure when those other pools were constructed. I know with respect to seawall installation, or tidal flood barrier installations along seawalls, there is a distance required to be offset. Yeah?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I know we all appreciate Mrs. Cutts' expertise in this area, but I caution the board, she is a board member, and if the board determines that they need this applicant to obtain that kind of expert testimony or evidence, they need to provide that to this board so that this board would be able to analyze. And I think the, the statements that have been made by Ms. Cutts evidence her concerns as it relates to the application, but by no means, as I, do I think she is giving any kind of expert testimony as to these particular items before the board. But if these items are of concern and you require additional information, that is something that the applicant will need to obtain from a professional to provide to you, to give you that kind of clearance. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, on the complaints for code enforcement, the one on June 15th, 2023, resident complaint of overgrowth of grass, weeds, and optimal boat, homeless people on the premises, roof in despair. Were you all owners of the house at that time?
I've owned the house, yes, for three years now.
Thank you.
Yes. We've cleared up the lot several times. It's, it needs to come down. The structures need to come down and everything. And that's, we were gonna have it demoed about three weeks ago, and it's just the demo company keeps postponing it. Construction woes, I suppose, but they're scheduled now again for this coming Monday as well. So we'll see what happens.
So you're saying the structure's coming down?
Structures are coming down.
If that structure comes down, could you put a pool in the backyard?
No, because of the trees and the power lines. And, you know, that would be a whole nother project to try to figure out how we can do that.
Thank you.
Question. I know you mentioned earlier there was a two foot retaining wall along the side property lines. I didn't see it in the, the image when you mentioned it. How are you managing stormwater with the, with the retaining walls and whatnot?
We have a whole engineering team. I mean, that's part of our build, right? We have the SIPs engineering, then we have a civil engineering person that's managing the plans. So the retaining, yeah, he, he actually, we had him review all of this as well. And he gave us his expert opinion that, I don't have anything in writing from him, so I'll just, I'll just kind of bypass that. But he was, he feels very strongly that putting the pool in the front does nothing to damage anything. But back to your question. So these are just renderings. You're not gonna see the wall on there, but that's all being done by the civil engineer and the, and the, yeah. And it's on the plans that were submitted to the city of Pompano.
Right. I'm just curious. You're raising the lot elevation, you know, to meet FEMA code, I'm assuming. And you're putting in the, the sidewalls, but how, you know, is your sufficient, are you managing the stormwater on the site through percolation and on-site? Or?
So both. It'll be, the retaining wall obviously is a part of that. But also, you know, whatever the greenery has to be, the percentages, we're gonna be in compliance with all of that, too.
But it's just through percolation? There is no?
Yeah, there's nothing else extraordinary that we're doing unless we're told we have to. So we're open to whatever that is. But so far, it's only, it's just been about the retaining wall and making sure that there's enough.
Okay.
So one question. With the retaining walls on the sides of the property, is there retaining wall on the back and, and the street side? I mean, how are you gonna keep stormwater from?
Goes around the property.
Right. But it's not gonna be in the front.
Right.
Well, that makes sense. Got to drain somewhere. Yeah. Front. All right. We've had the public hearing. Do you have any closing comments?
No, I just thank you for even hearing us out. This is really important to me. Like I said, I've been wanting this project done for a long time. So I appreciate you hearing us. So thank you.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Board discussion or motion?
So I have a thought that I just wanna share. The trees in the backyard being preserved and the root system potentially, to me, seems like it could be a hardship, but I don't see evidence showing that we, I can look at and say it is because of the tree root system. Without that evidence, I don't feel very comfortable allowing this variance.
It seems the site plan shifting structures to the south would potentially show whether a setback from the trees and the power lines sufficient to accommodate the pool without dramatically impacting that. To see if the pool could fit back there would, would give some level of confidence. I'd also like to see some sort of grading plan to understand how that stormwater is being managed on the site and, and, you know, whether there's sufficient impervious area to accommodate that, considering that they're elevating the property and putting retaining walls on the sides. But, you know, obviously, we can't have that property, that stormwater draining back towards the street.
It'll, it'll just sit in a puddle almost if there's not a grading. And I see what you're saying, Penny. I, I just feel like this is incomplete, what we're being presented with today. And because of that, I'm not very comfortable with the variance.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion. It's fine. Where are we? In planning a zoning case 24110002, I move we find there is competent and substantial evidence in the record that all requirements for granting the variance have been met and that we grant the variance subject to the three conditions requested by staff.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. It's been made and seconded.
Would we want to offer the applicant the opportunity to come back with additional information?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Offer the applicant the opportunity to come back with additional information, including a.
I, I thought you would have made that motion if you wanted.
Look, I just put it out there. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to offer anything. But if the, if the applicant wants to withdraw or postpone with further information.
If you want to make a motion.
Is that something we would motion? Oh, okay.
You can motion.
Then I.
So withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my previous motion.
I withdraw my second.
And then if, I, I think you heard some of the things that they're looking for. Get with Scott. We can postpone this month? Scott?
It's, if you want to do it to a date certain, it's, it's, yeah, it could be 30 or 60 days.
Why don't we postpone this for a month? It'll be a date certain. It's, I forget, April?
April 18th.
April 18th. And then you can figure out and give us some more information if we, and remember I said to you early on, my job is to be sure that you get a full and fair hearing. And I'd rather postpone and give you the opportunity to regroup here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. I can always say no.
I'm a little confused because.
You might want to speak into the mic.
I'm not gonna be able to get.
Into the mic.
We're not, we wouldn't be able to get the plans approved without engineering and all, all the different city officials looking at that pertaining to the water runoff. So wouldn't that all be inclusive when we're developing the plan, submitting it to the city? Isn't that something they would be making sure that we're doing properly for the neighbors, et cetera?
Yeah. I mean, I'd be curious to see the site grading plan and pervious versus impervious submitted with the application package. But I think that the part that we're looking for that pertains to the variance in particular is an alternatives analysis, an onsite alternative showing various site plans so that we could see if the setbacks that would be required to put the pool in the back could be accommodated and still have this a viable property. Because you're saying that the parcel itself has restrictions to building, you know, to, to constructing a pool without this variance. So I think we need to see a site plan option series showing that if we include, it, it doesn't have to be a full development, but just, just a conceptual plan view showing, okay, we've got power lines here. We have to have a setback from the power lines here in order to preserve the, the trees. Wade says we have to be offset this far from the tree root system based on the size of the trees. And then we would have to have the side setbacks, the front setbacks. And, and this is, you know, if we put the pool here, it's gonna shove the, the house to impede on the front setback.
So basically, new landscaping plans reflect, and arbiter's report to show why we can or cannot either remove the trees.
He wants to settle, she wants to settle.
That's partly, but if it's tree related, it's also landscaping.
Just a site plan. Not, not a full, you know, arborist report, you know, consult with your arborist, obviously, or, or the city's arborist. But, you know, again, from the power lines, heavy equipment can't construct within a certain distance of the power lines. I don't recall what that is. From the trees, in order to protect the trees, you've got to be a certain distance from the root systems. You know, they could theoretically be root pruned to some degree, but we don't want those trees growing into your plumbing if you're putting a pool in there. But if you were to setback from the power lines and then put your pool in, that's gonna push your house forward. Is that gonna push the house into the front setback? In which case, you'd need a variance again.
We want to avoid. So that, between that and the water runoff, that would be good for?
Yeah, the grading plan, you know, I'm more curious about just because we did have a concern with flooding from, from a citizen. And so, you know, if we saw a grading plan or had something from, you know, civil showing that, no, we realize that, you know, this is adequate to, you know, it's, it's not necessarily our purview because you're not requesting a variance from that. Just curiosity mainly because of the flooding concern from, from.
Makes everybody feel better. I understand that.
It, it'll at least give me clear understanding of if the variance is worthy or not.
Right. All right. So I'd like a motion then to postpone Andy Hasbrook, P&amp;Z 24-110002 to the meeting of May 15.
April.
I'm sorry, April.
April 18th.
April 18th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
18th, 6:00 PM, third Thursday of the month. Scott, will there be any re-advertising?
No.
Just calling on record now.
No, no, no re-advertising.
If anyone in the audience or online is listening in, this case number five for Andy Hasbrook, LN 577, or also P&amp;Z 24-110002, will be postponed until April 18th at 6:00 PM. There will be no further advertisement.
Thank you.
We're good.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We're gonna take five. Okay, we're back on the record, and we have our last case for tonight. It's item number six, LN 578, and that's variance for Spectrum Programs RE Holdings, Inc. It's a variance request for, let's see, P&amp;Z 24-11-0003. Sir, tell us who you are.
My name's Eric Anderson, Anderson Architecture up in Boca Raton, 399 West Communal Gardens Boulevard. And I'm here representing my client.
Okay. We'll stop there. Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Excellent.
Sworn in, sworn at, everything.
I understand, same thing here. Scott, tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, for our last item, the applicant landowner is requesting a variance from the following provisions. One, section 155-4302B2F and 155-4302B2G, which are the prohibited location of accessory structures of the Pompano Beach zoning code in order to allow a dumpster enclosure to be located in a required front yard and in front of a principal structure. And the second request is from section 155-5301C2C of the zoning code in order to allow a commercial container to be located in a front yard. The subject property is located on the south side of Southwest Second Street between South Dixie Highway and Avondale Drive in the Avondale neighborhood. The subject property is comprised of three buildings on three adjacent parcels, and is licensed as an inpatient substance abuse treatment facility operated by Banyan Health Systems. The applicant is proposing to install a dumpster enclosure located five feet, three inches from the front lot line. Most accessory structures, including commercial containers like a dumpster enclosure, may not be located within the required front yard setback nor located in front of a principal structure. The applicant is seeking relief from these code provisions. According to the applicant's narrative, the primary reason for the request is because onsite trash collection provides an opportunity for drugs to be transported onto the complex, whereas locating the dumpster outside of the complex gate will minimize access to patients. The applicant states that the city's recycling coordinator has affirmed that the collection truck maneuvering plan for the proposed location of the dumpster enclosure is acceptable. And further, the applicant states that the design will provide for additional landscape opportunities. There are eight review standards in the staff report. The applicant has addressed these eight points. However, staff objects to the proposed variance and questions the applicant's assertion that the requested relief will improve the visual landscape. Sidewalks play a vital role in city life, and adding a dumpster enclosure so close to Southwest Second Street sidewalks does not enhance the general public health or aesthetic design of this residential Avondale block. Unlimiting patient or resident interaction with sanitation personnel is not an extraordinary and exceptional condition and does not warrant a variance. However, should the board determine the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence sufficient to satisfy the review standards, staff recommends the board include the following three conditions as part of the order. One, obtain all necessary governmental permits and approvals, including building and zoning compliance permits. Two, in collaboration with the city's urban forester, revise the landscape plan to provide superior and enhanced landscaping in excess of code requirements in areas where landscaping is feasible, specifically along the street frontage. And the third recommended staff condition is to replace the existing chain link fencing facing Southwest Second Street with superior material such as wrought iron or other decorative metal material. And that concludes staff's report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Ali. Counselor? I'm sorry, you're not, I'm an attorney. Sir?
I really don't have a whole lot to add to this. You know, the situation's pretty simple. My client's kind of going out of his way, spending money that he doesn't need to spend on something that's not gonna generate any revenue for him. It's simply about trying to limit the amount of people, particularly coming from the outside, that could come on to what can only be classified as campus, to minimize the opportunities that a transaction, for lack of a better term, can take place. They go to great lengths to try and keep the public out, so that, keep people from being lapsing. And that's, that's all of it in a nutshell. You know, it would be simple if he just did garbage bins like everybody else on this street does. I took a ride around the streets over the last couple of days. Happened to hit it today on garbage day, and, you know, the bins are laying on the ground. Did run across a couple, the only two people that, or only two locations that did have enclosed dumpsters. They backed out, the truck would have to back out onto the street, so I don't know how long this new ordinance has been in place, but it doesn't matter. You know, we're happy to comply. It's gonna be a heck of a lot more expensive to do it this way than backing somebody out on the street, but, you know, rules are rules, and we're looking not to circumvent any of that stuff. And so it really comes down to, are you willing to join with us to do what we can to keep some of the traffic off of this site to give these people a better chance of success? And if one of them, if this helps one of them, happy birthday. You know, where we're putting this dumpster is where there's an existing parking space now. And, you know, the dumpster enclosure's gonna be six feet tall, it's gonna be measuring, it's gonna be painted the same as the building. I won't, I can't BS you and tell you that you're never gonna see it, but because of the way that we have to configure the driveway and maneuver the truck onsite, the gates to the dumpster don't face the street, they face to the side. And so, it's gonna be as unobtrusive as it can be. There's a couple of conditions that Scott talked about with adding some additional landscaping. My client's fine with that. And replacing the non-client fence that's in the front, it's not a problem. You know, happy to do it.
Question here?
Sir?
Where is it currently located? I've been trying to figure that out.
It's on Southwest Second Street, just west of Dixie.
No, the dumpster, onsite, where is it currently located?
Well, no, I take that back. They do have one, but it's inside, for lack of a better term, the compound. Let me see if I-
Secondary question to that is, since the space is now gonna be freed up inside the compound, what's gonna go there now? I'm just curious, is there something-
It's an open paved area, and, you know, it's a place where residents can congregate and do whatever residents do when they congregate. You know, it's weird, I was going to another job site down in Hollywood, two weeks ago, and I drove past one of these places, not same owner, but one of these places. And, gosh, you really recognize what, I mean, I'm sure that none of us can relate, but, or maybe we can. But these guys happen to be guys, you know, are up against fence, and, God, they kind of look like, I don't know. When you see people in that condition, because it's easy to drive by, and when they're inside a building, you don't, you don't pay attention. But then when you see them, you put a face with a, face with an affliction, and it's like, man, we should be doing everything we can to try and get these guys out.
You know, we've approved a lot of things for different types of properties and projects to help people in need. But the only justification that I've heard that would warrant, that you've stated that would warrant a variance here, is that you suspect that our sanitation workers could be drug dealers. That's the only single claim you made?
Yes.
Okay. And on that basis, I have to tell you, in over twenty years of doing this, that is the worst justification I have ever seen. And, I'm, when I saw that, I was stumped to even think that you would have, make a claim that one of our sanitation workers...Don't you have security? Don't you have staff? Can you not manage your patients that you have to worry? Does every delivery have a problem? You're, again, the worst present, the worst criteria I've ever had. If you want to add anything to it, I'm happy to listen. But I gotta tell you, if that's your only, if that's the only thing you gotta tell us, we're done.
I don't think you took it correctly, but it is our only justification. Nobody's pointing fingers by any stretch of imagination, and nobody's saying that-
Then read the criteria, read the criteria for variances, and you'll see where you stand with that. But to, in both your written application and your verbal presentation, to talk about your justification that a potential city or a contractor is going to deal drugs, not only insults them, but I guess all the city employees, and quite honestly, it really says that your management can't manage. If you have to put that blame so far out, that doesn't save very much. Does every bread delivery guy have to get searched and, you know?
I don't know.
Anyway, that's, I know it's your client, it's not you.
No, and it's-
And does anybody else have any questions? This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in support? Hearing none. Does anyone else in opposition? Hearing none, and take as much time as you want. I'm not stopping you.
Okay. I don't know that I can add a lot to this. It's, it's not so much an accusatory type of thing, and I, hopefully, it didn't come across that way. But it is, if we can eliminate, it's a lot easier to prevent it before, prevent something before it happens than after it does. And if it is one thing that happens, then happy birthday. You know, we all hope and wish that none of this, we wish these places didn't have to exist. They do. And if this, my client felt strong enough to spend the kind of money, and I don't know what this is gonna cost, a hundred grand, a hundred twenty-five grand, something like that, to take what he perceives to be that extra little step. When he first came to me about, said, why aren't we just doing bins like everybody else? And his answer was, he wanted to make sure, one, everything got outside, try and run a clean operation. And, you know, it doesn't take a mental giant to drive up and down the street, see the bins on the sides and stuff like that. And it's just, it's, it's hard to manage these kind of facilities. My heart goes out to him in a way. And this was the only option available to him based on the way that the buildings are. There just wasn't any other option. You know, we wish we could put it, we wish we could take this dumpster and put it somewhere else, but, you know, these buildings, I mean, this is, you know, these buildings have been around there probably since the 50s. You know, there's old duplexes and triplexes and things like that that have been through multiple iterations of function. And unfortunately, the way that they're configured, the spaces in between them, they just don't lend itself to being able to bring it inside the, inside the setback line, which made this process necessary. And it's kind of our only shot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Board discussion? Motion?
Um, yes, I would like to make a-
Rookie making a motion?
In P&amp;Z case number 24-11-0003, I move we find there is competent and substantial evidence in the record that all the requirements for granting the variance have not been met and that we grant the variance subject to the number three conditions requested by staff. Happy met.
Happy met. Very good. We have a motion, it's been made and seconded. Further discussion? I know I kind of said my piece. No discussion?
I tend to agree with you, Mr. Chair. Like, it's, I, yeah.
Call the question.
Okay, we're gonna vote twice, okay? Nicole Kopak?
No.
Charlotte Berry?
No.
James Bun?
No.
Penny Cut?
No.
Richard Dally?
No.
Dan Yaffe?
No.
Denied. We have another one?
We have one more on this same one.
Do we need, we need another motion?
Yes, 'cause it's a separate.
There was two variances.
There were two requests for this.
That's fine. I'll make the second motion. Is, where is the second case number? Is it same case number?
Same case number.
Okay, great. In the planning zoning case 2411-00003, I move we find there is competent and substantial evidence in the record that all requirements for granting the variance have been met and that we grant the variance-